Good afternoon, everybody. I'm councillor Jess Bailey and I'd like to welcome new and returning members, members of the public and new and returning officers to today's Health and Adult Care Scrutiny Committee. I'd also like to welcome Peter Hay, CBE, who is the committee's special advisor. Also, a reminder that today's meeting is being livestreamed and so please use the microphones on the tables, speaking directly into them. As part of Chair's announcements, I'd just like to mention the following point. It was announced on Wednesday, the 9th of July, that the government, as part of its 10-year plan, would be rolling out neighbourhood health services to be delivered in most deprived areas first, where healthy life expectancy is lowest. It's called for expressions of interest from CEOs of local authorities and ICBS before the 8th of August. So I just wanted to let the committee know that I've written to our chief executive asking that Devon puts forward some of its most deprived areas to be considered and as to be included in the first wave of the programme. And if we could now move, please, to apologies.
None received, Chair.
Thank you. And declarations of interest, if we could go around the room, please. If any members has any declarations of interest, I'd like to declare. Councillor Granger.
Hello, I'm councillor Granger from Orkhampton Rural. I have a conflict of interest and I own a private ambulance company. So I'll be abstaining from any vote regarding ambulance agendas.
Councillor Ketchin.
I'm our consultant at the Royal Devon Extra Hospital, so it might come in some of the things I can or can't say.
So I can hear you.
It might come in some of the things, contributions I can or can't make.
Okay. And I'd like to make a declaration of interest. I'm appointed to the Devon and Somerset Fire Authority as a member of that authority. So I'd like to declare a personal interest in item number seven. And I've discussed that with the deputy monitoring officer. Thank you. If we could now move to the minutes for the meeting of the 24th of March 2025, which are attached to the agenda. But any comments or can I sign them as a true and accurate record, please? Councillor Hodson.
I can propose those.
Thank you. Any comments from anybody? No? Okay, thank you. Let's approve the... A show of hands, please. Thank you. And now moving to items requiring urgent attention. So I've got one item requiring urgent attention and that relates to the future of the minor injuries unit in Ilfracombe for provision at weekends when the current contract comes to an end on 31st of July. I've been trying to, with my colleagues, find out what is going to happen at the end of July, bearing in mind it's only two weeks. I'm disappointed that we haven't yet had any clarification. So I would suggest that I liaise with myself, the vice chair and local councillor, councillor Sarah Wilson, who I can see is online after this meeting, and aim to set up a meeting with the ICB later this week to try and resolve what actually is happening because I am concerned that there's no provision in place and it's only the current contract comes to an end in only two weeks. I don't know whether councillor Wilson wants to say anything.
Thank you. Yes, I think that would be extremely valuable meeting. So yeah, thank you for that, yes, cons.
Thank you. And if we could now, please, move on to public participation. We have six speakers, each with three minutes to speak. The clerk will time the speeches and give a 30-second warning and will indicate when the three minutes is up. Thank you.
Thank you. So the first speaker is councillor John Hutchings, Mayor of Holsworthy.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of the people of Holsworthy. As Mayor of Holsworthy, I put to you that withdrawing the co-responder scheme cannot be justified for the following reasons. The scheme in our community of Holsworthy was born out of tragic deaths within the town when our local ambulances was already committed to other calls. The wait was over an hour for one for another ambulance. The scheme has developed and matured over the last 26 years into an essential part of the community and surrounding areas of emergency response. Holsworthy, I believe, are six community first responders, three employment out of the town, one is not available at present and one only responds when working in pairs. When alerted, they can choose to accept or decline to respond and then proceed at normal road speed in their own vehicle. The fire crew are alerted and respond to all calls. They are sent in dedicated blue light vehicles supplied by the fire service. The fire crew are available by virtue of the retained fire contracts 24/7. Why if the volunteer scheme is short and take over Holsworthy? The Holsworthy station have approximately 200 category one calls in 2024 and over 70 so far this year. Not only are they covering our community and surrounding villages, they often go to Bude and even Loughton. The fire coresponders only respond to category one calls, the most urgent life-threatening. The response times on the government website for category one is seven minutes. How can you sustain that in a rural area using volunteers? The saving of SWAST quoted in the press by using volunteers would be £60 per call on overall annual saving of £250,000, spread over Devon, Somerset, Cornwall, Dorset and Wiltshire. I understand the fire service charge SWAST a fixed £80 per call. That's pretty cheap to possibly save someone's life. How much is it going to cost to train, equip the volunteers in these towns and villages and hamlets? The advert for recruiting community first responders currently lists pretty much every town in Devon. Where are these volunteers going to come from to cover all the hours necessary when we know volunteer numbers are in major decline nationally? During the COVID emergency, the community responders were stood down. However, the fire coresponders responded normally and some volunteered to crew-drive ambulances to maintain SWAST availability. As we live in uncertain times, who can say similar circumstances couldn't arise again? It has been suggested that the press, in the press, that SWAST stated that community responders are better trained. They have, I believe, two medical procedures available to them, but the fire coresponders have not been offered. We should know that the fire coresponders are experienced and have skill modules that the CFR do not. They're experienced in the traumatic aspect of category one calls and attend road traffic casualties which CFR do not. Also, the team of two, they offer more effective and sustainable resuscitation response. So why would you not tend to agree that coresponders have a lot to offer? As SWAST alert the fire coresponders and have full control over it and when they are alerted, you could modify the criteria and possibly the triage system to make reduction in call numbers and costs. Without this scheme, responses times would go up and people will die. Are you happy to say, sorry, your family member died, but we saved £80? And just finally, I've been informed that there have been three category one calls in Holsworthy in the last seven days. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker, who I believe is online, is councillor Terry Elliott from Ilfracombe Town Council.
Hello. I'm here representing the rural coastal communities covered by fire service coresponders at Coomartting and Woollycombe Fire Station, who also attend incidents in Ilfracombe. It appears to me that South West Ambulance's decision to act coresponders is driven by cost-cutting. However, simple calculations prove that the cost benefit of this decision is so negligible compared to the impact it will have on isolated communities that it's hard to justify. Figures for 2023/24, taken from South West Ambulance's annual report, put operating costs at £399,378,000 annually. But we are told that the cost of coresponders is only £280,000 a year. That is only 0.07% of the annual budget. South West Ambulance are banding a lot of figures about, but based on their last published report, 2023/24, 81 coresponders attended 3,500 category one patients, compared to 600 community responders attending 5,600 category one patients. Now, these are life-saving responses. That is a rate of 43 responses per coresponder for urgent patients compared with 9.3 per community responder. Community responders are no doubt important, but the evidence suggests that first responders are valued, sorry, coresponders are valued lifesavers and are expertly skilled in category one trauma. We know this from our own experiences in our communities with coresponders from Coomartting and Woollycombe saving lives locally. They are tried and tested and trusted and blooming good value for money. They are rapid and can carry more life-saving equipment than a community response vehicle. My question is, where are they going to get all these community responders from in remote areas with volunteer fatigue? Remember, they have to be fit and available to be released from their work. Very unlikely is the answer in low-wage, zero-hours economies in places like North Devon. Where is the evidence that this decision is based on? What work have they done to scope out how likely it is to recruit volunteers? And more importantly, where was the consultation with both the communities affected and the fire officers providing this service? And finally, their 2023/24 report talks about commitment to addressing health inequality. Ilfracombe and Coomartting have the worst health statistics in Devon, excluding Plymouth, and the greatest level of deprivation. Where is the impact statement on how this decision will affect the poorest and those most at risk with existing poor health in the most remote communities? This decision is not safe and not well-considered. South West Ambulance Trust, please go back to the drawing board and reconsider for all the reasons I have identified.
Thank you. The next speaker is Carolyn King.
My name's Carol King. I was the SWAST operations manager for North and Mid Devon for eight years, managing ambulance stations in Linton, Ilfracombe, South Malton, Tiverton, Orkhampton, Holsworthy, Biddiford and Bartstow. This is a large area with very remote small towns and villages. The distance from Linton to Holsworthy is 53 miles. When SWAST decided to downgrade Linton Ambulance Station from an ambulance to a car, the fire brigade agreed to step in and the fire co-responder scheme was started. Living in a remote area myself in Wolsey, I fully supported the scheme. Coomartting, Woollycombe, Hartland and Holsworthy and Linton Fire Stations were all in my area and also came on board. As a registered paramedic, I was involved in a lot of the initial medical training of the fire coresponders. Fire coresponders are a uniform service that train weekly and always attend patients as a team of two. SWAST now want to replace them with a single volunteer community first responder. Professionally, know that CPR is only effective as the person that's performing it. Doing two to four minutes of good CPR is exhausting. After that, you need to change the operator as you are no longer affected. So how will a single community first responder deliver basic life support? One, who calls for backup? North Devon is remote and the phone signal can be poor. Who continues CPR after two to four minutes? Who updates the call? Who deals with scene safety, the defibrillator, airway management and oxygen? Who deals with the distraught family? More important, is the responder in a safe environment on their own? A lone community responder is not going to be able to save lives. I've been on my own as a paramedic and it's difficult waiting for backup. On the 7th and 8th of July 2025, North and Mid Devon had a total of just 14 ambulances by day and eight by night for a population of over 100,000. When there are no ambulances available, they are at risk of serious harm. Fire coresponders fill a valuable and serious response. Linton, Coomartting, Woollycombe, Hartland and Holsworthy are all very isolated and so these communities rely on the fire community responders. Most fire coresponders both live and work in the area. They know the roads, they know the shortcuts and often they know the patients. They are also blue light trained. Survival of a cardiac arrest outside of hospital is less than 10%. Defibrillation within three to five minutes of a collapse, combined with effective CPR and oxygen, can increase the survival rate to 50s to 70%. Replacing the fire co-responder teams with community fire responders would cost lives. What prices are life, please?
Thank you. The next speaker is Mr Mark Nesbit.
My name is Mark Nesbit and for over 15 years I was part of the fire co-responder team based in Hartland Fire Station. Our team has supported the ambulance service for more than 25 years and attended at least 1,000 casualties on their behalf in this time. Fire corresponders are all trained by SWAST and carry SWAST pages. The team is on call 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Fire corresponders turn out in teams of two, are all blue light trained and provide the fastest response time in a fully equipped emergency vehicle. They all have two hours of training every week, know their station ground well and are used to working in emergencies. The experience they gain in both their fire brigade and their fire co-responder roles are complementary and further enhance their abilities at callouts. As well as residential addresses, I have been to category one callouts in busy pubs, at village hall events, in holiday cottages in remote locations where the callout is completely unfamiliar with the area, on beaches, on farmland, in the street and even in a doctor's surgery. As well as heart attacks, there have been drownings, suicides, major bleeds, fall from a height and even childbirth. Having a team of two has been essential in being able to find and manage these buried and always demanding situations. Ambulance and air ambulance attendance has often been 50 to 20 minutes and longer after our arrival on scene, which means there's an extended period of active patient care is often required. We have also been paid to assist mobile SWAST paramedics who are attending a patient on their own and who then need help with CPR or for their own safety. During the pandemic, I also volunteered to be seconded to SWAST and drove ambulances and worked 12-hour day and night shifts. This was always as a team of two and with a paramedic, so I have direct experience of working within the ambulance service as well. The proposal to use a single volunteer community first responder, who is free to reject calls, only signs on for the periods that suits their lifestyle and turns out in their own private vehicle without blue lights or sirens, shows no understanding of the reality of what's involved in emergency response in rural areas or the consequences of getting it wrong. A single community first responder will take much longer to reach the patient and once there will be far less able to deliver and sustain effective care. SWAST might initially save a few pounds with this proposed change, but the long-term cost in life-changing patient outcomes will be far, far greater. And I've got here a petition which has been signed by 1,424 members of the community of Hartland, Wolsey, Clavely, Welcome and Medden. Our surgery, sorry to run on, but our surgery has 3,000 people in Hartland. We have 1,424 signatures here, so it shows the level of feeling that exists. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Trudy Bowles.
My name is Trudy Bowles and I live in the village of Hartland in North Devon. I am the practice manager at Hartland Surgery, where we currently care for just over 3,000 patients. At the surgery, we often face medical emergencies requiring urgent ambulance support. Unfortunately, it is not uncommon for us to wait for over an hour for an ambulance to arrive. Hartland is also a farming community and the challenges of delayed emergency response are not limited to the elderly. In October last year, we treated a teenager who arrived at the surgery with a suspected ruptured spleen, a potentially life-threatening condition. Despite repeated calls and the GP actively chasing the ambulance, it took two hours and 40 minutes for it to arrive. I've also had a deeply personal experience with the incredible work our local fire coresponders do. In the early hours of a Sunday morning in October 2010, my husband, Mike, who had always been fit and healthy, suddenly began to feel unwell. After going to the bathroom, he collapsed and rapidly deteriorated. For the first time in my life, I dialed 999. I was completely untrained in first aid and unsure of what to do. Within just five minutes, three of our local fire coresponders arrived, Mark, who is here with me today, along with Robin and Alan. By that time, Mike's condition had worsened significantly. He had become unresponsive and suffered a cardiac arrest. To begin resuscitation, they had to move him from our small bathroom into the bedroom, something that no single person could have done alone. One thing that sticks in my mind was the amount of equipment that they used and they needed. Whilst two of them worked on Mike, the third was chasing the ambulance, ambulance which still hadn't arrived, whilst running back and forth to their vehicle to collect more supplies. After about 20 minutes, a paramedic arrived, followed shortly by an ambulance crew. Thanks to the fire coresponders, Mike was stabilised long enough to receive the critical treatment he needed and to be transported to hospital. After spending two months in intensive care and undergoing a heart bypass, he made an incredible recovery. Tragically, Mike passed away in December 23. But because of those three remarkable and highly trained fire coresponders, he was given the chance to see his daughter get married, meet his grandson and give me another 13 years of marriage. Mike knew he would be forever indebted to our local coresponders, especially the three who gave him his life back that night. Their actions didn't just save him, they gave him a second chance and now that debt has passed on to me. The thought of having this vital lifeline taken away from those that live in a rural community such as ours, a service that costs so little yet means so much, is unthinkable.
Thank you. And the final speaker is Penny Dane.
Hello, my name's Penny Dane and I live in Hartland. I'm here today to read a statement from a family in Wolsey, which is within the Hartland coresponders area, who didn't have the benefit of coresponders coming out to their medical emergency. These are their words. "In December 2020, during the night, we were woken by our daughter Claire shouting for help and knocking on our door. Claire had stirred from her sleep to find her fiance Trevor unconscious and not breathing in bed beside her. We immediately phoned 99 for an ambulance and waited for help. While we and our two sons followed instructions given over the phone, we attempted to resuscitate Trevor. We were originally told that the air ambulance would be sent only to be then be told that the weather conditions were too bad. So we had a long wait for the ambulance to arrive with our son James constantly carrying out CPR on Trevor. We think it was about 40 minutes, but don't know the exact time. By the time the paramedics arrived and they got Trevor breathing again, unfortunately, he had been starved of oxygen for too long. Trevor spent many weeks in various hospitals before being sent to a specialist care home for 24-hour care, where he still lives to this day. Trevor is not able to speak, communicate or eat without a feed tube and has very limited movement of any limbs. Although we regularly visit, we don't really know if he even recognizes any of us. Claire and Trevor were engaged at the time and just had an offer for their first home together accepted with a deposit paid. Trevor was seemingly fit and healthy at the time, so this came as a major shock to us all. This has changed our lives forever and has affected us all very badly. I think this case is a perfect example of why it's essential for first responders to arrive as early as possible, especially for people living in a rural area like ourselves. We can't help but think that if we had had an earlier response from trained personnel, Trevor could have been saved in time and still live to lead a normal life. A quicker first response time would have made the whole situation a lot less traumatic for us all, knowing that we had professional people at the scene. Thank you."
Thank you very much to our public speakers and the very powerful statements that they have made today. I'd like to welcome Dr John Martin, Chief Executive of South Western Ambulance Service Trust, and Jane Macello, Head of Volunteering. I've asked Dr Martin to appear to answer questions about the decision to terminate the 30-year fire co responding partnership between the ambulance trust and Devon and Somerset Fire and Rescue Service. I've received many communications from concerned residents about this proposed termination. We have a petition today with 1,400 signatures and I'm aware of another petition with nearly 4,000 signatures, which shows the strength of feeling on this matter. Whilst the committee cannot direct the ambulance trust on what it should and should not do, it can, if it sees fit, make recommendations to the trust and that is what we're going to be discussing today. Although our scrutiny function relates to the performance of the health trusts, I've also invited the chief fire officer Gavin Ellis and his deputy Gerald Taylor of Devon and Somerset Fire and Rescue Service and they are here today. It's in my view important that the fire and rescue service have the opportunity to comment on any matters relating to the partnership, should they wish, and to be able to answer any specific questions of fact that they are able to do so. I know that many members of the committee will have concerns and wish to comment on this matter, but please can we initially, first of all, address questions to the South Western Ambulance Trust? And first of all, I would like Dr Martin to comment. We've all read your report and I'd like to invite you to comment on the powerful public statements that we've heard today, particularly around taking away a vital lifeline which costs so little but means so much.
Thank you, Chair. Good afternoon, everybody, and I want to say a huge thank you to the members of the public who have just given their stories, also to fire coresponders who over the last 30 years or so have provided vital services across the South West. And you'll be aware, we're going to be discussing Devon today, but we provide services across Devon, Somerset, which the fire service also look after, but for us also Cornwall, Gloucestershire, Wiltshire, Dorset and the Bristol area. In Devon, we receive about 799 calls every day and they come across a whole range of different categories. So category one is what we're going to talk about today, which are the most life-threatening emergencies, including those of cardiac arrest that we have already heard. When one of those calls comes in, we respond in a variety of ways. We do want to get an ambulance to you quickly and this committee will have looked at ambulance response times. But we know in some of our communities that we need to get other resources there and that's where, over the years, we've used fire coresponders. I'm going to talk in a bit about community first responders, which is new. They've been around for a bit of a less time, but have been developing. But we also work with other volunteers, say things like the Basics Doctor Association, where we'll deploy them on our coastal communities. We'll work with the RNLI, which I'd like to point out is also made up of volunteers. And I think my first point I'd like to make is this differential between professional and volunteers. We have volunteers in lots of services that we run across the United Kingdom, including in some of our helicopter emergency medical services. So the change that we have proposed and we are currently working through is on the back of us constantly reviewing our model. Our primary reason for being as an ambulance service is to maintain the best possible service we can to the populations that we serve and to do that within the resources that we are allocated by government as a public service. We've seen in recent years that our community first responder model, they are volunteers. They're made up of a whole different range of backgrounds. Some are professionals, so they might well be nurses or doctors or other medical professionals or, as in my report, an example of a post office worker who has taken on community responding. Geoff Edwards, one of your residents. So these volunteers are highly trained, they work to a level three standard. They have regular training and updates that they are provided with under governance structure that wraps around them. And when a category one call comes in, we'll look for the nearest responder to send. And what we have seen across the region is that community first responders are reliable, they are fast and they provide a scope of practice which is variable in our fire services if we take the region as a whole. And so when it comes to cardiac arrest, what we want to do, and Carol, as one of the public speakers, outlined, that we know to get the best that we know to get the best survival rates for cardiac arrest, we need to get somebody there who is trained quickly as possible to start CPR. We need to get a defibrillator there as quickly as possible and ideally more than one, and we will send, just to provide clarity here, more than one community first responder to a cardiac arrest where they are available. It's that speed that is important to us, so reliability. So when we dispatch, can we get someone there and can we get them there quickly? That has driven this change for us. So whilst there has been many comments about the finances and you'll note in our report, it is it is cheaper to deploy a community first responder. Our primary aim here is who can get there quickest. And what we have looked at in our data is that collectively, community first responders are responding quicker than fire coresponders. I'd like to give a rationale for that, if that's okay, Chair, and that's because community first responders, we're seeing bigger numbers of, so there's more of them about on more and more street corners. They respond from home, so they don't have to first get to the fire station. They, when they arrive, they don't have to wait for a pair, they can go immediately. In fact, you'll see in my report, we want to go further to improve cardiac arrest survival. And that is that we would like as many members of the community to be available on the new Good Sam system that we have operating across the South West. That means anybody, including anyone in this room who is trained in cardiopulmonary resuscitation, our CAD, our computer aided dispatch system, would know where you are, we would deploy you. Looking internationally, this is the best way we're going to improve the cardiac arrest survival rates that have already been seen. And there's no reason why our fire coresponders can't also have this on their phones, and we have offered that to the fire service as we have offered to them that they can be trained to be community first responders. So in summary, our change is about increasing the amount of responders we have available, the ability and reliability to get them there quickly to the scene, because we believe that's the best chance we have of improving survival to discharge rates for patients in cardiac arrest. I want to say again, a huge thank you to our fire coresponders over the years, the offer remains open with them to train as community first responders. We've worked with the fire service as we transition. And my final point I want to make is that we are not stopping any scheme until we have stood up enough community first responders to be in place. So although we have outlined a timeframe of twelve months, because we felt that that was courteous to our partners in the fire service, we have committed together with the fire service that we won't be standing down any co-responder scheme unless we have managed to stand up community first responder scheme, which I believe addresses that question of, will we be able to find them? If we can't find them, then we're in a different situation. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I'd just like to ask if Gavin Ellis or Gerald Taylor would like to come in at this point and either comment on the report or make any other comments.
Thank you, Chair. I'm Gavin Ellis, Chief Fire Officer for Devon and Somerset Fire and Rescue Service. First of all, I'd just like to echo the thoughts of Dr John Martin on the public speakers today and the really humanistic stories that you've told, really, really do show the value of where we've been for the last thirty years. But also to reflect on the pride that our firefighters have to do this piece of work as well within their local communities where they will know most of those victims that have been involved in these incidents. We are working with South West Ambulance Service to look at the scheme. And we know we've got some way to go with that. We also recognise the value that coresponders bring, not just from being mobilised for co-responder incidents, but because of the level of training, they provide additional support, our other core functions as well, such as fires and RTCs that they attend. And so the value for the community is large. We are still involved in discussions about how we progress that forward. We recognise that from a scheme, when we do have community first responders move into an area where we have the co-responding scheme, that we see the ebb and flow of demand with our fire crews and they're very much used to that. But we also see some of the wide-ranging incidents they attend and also the number of incidents they attend, but some stations can be up to fifty percent of their activity. And so I believe there's still some, there's still some discussions that we can take place and move forward about how we can look at hierarchical approach to responding to our communities. With regards to asking our staff to be community first responders on a voluntary basis, would have implications for our ability to provide operational fire cover, which is our primary function, so that would be something that would need to be discussed further. Thank you.
Thank you. If we could now go to committee to ask any questions that they have for Dr Martin. And we also have two councillors who are registered to speak. Councillor Cottle Hunkin and councillor Julian. Robin Julian, I don't know whether they want to speak at this point, if they've got any questions. Could we go to councillor Cheryl Cottle Hunkin first, please?
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Bailey. Can you hear me okay? In inviting South West Ambulance Service to the scrutiny committee, I had hoped to see more detail and explanation of the changes and plans in place to back up their decision to phase out fire coresponders. I'm very concerned by the statistics that have been provided. They are ambiguous and lacking in detail. For example, the comparison in the number of callouts makes community first responders look far higher. But this is not a fair comparison, as we know that community first responders respond to all categories of emergencies, whereas fire coresponders only respond to category one emergencies. Similarly, in reference to the average response times to the emergency calls, there is no detail provided on the distances covered or the rarity of the areas that have been reached by fire coresponders in comparison to community first responders. Might it be possible that community first responders have responded in a more urban setting where it has been much quicker and easier to reach? We simply don't have that detail. The report also refers to their need to meet national expectations for efficiency and value for money. This surely suggests that this is a decision made due to lack of funding. There is also no recognition in the report that fire coresponders are able to use blue lights in order to get to their location quicker. Over the past few weeks, I've heard from numerous people in the local community praising the fire service who know people whose lives have literally been saved over the years thanks to them. And everyone I speak to is hugely concerned by the decision to ax this partnership, which has been doing such a fantastic job. Volunteers are also fantastic, yes, and community first responders do an amazing job, but I feel they should be used to enhance the service, not to replace it. My local fire station at Havelley has supported the ambulance service with coresponders for the past twenty-eight years. They responded a hundred and sixty times in twenty twenty four, a hundred and ninety-six times in twenty twenty three and a hundred and eighty-nine times in twenty twenty two. They reach a vast rural area, which includes not just Havelley, but the wider area stretching across West Devon and Torridge, including Merton, Meath, High Hampton, Sheepwash, Black Torrington, Shabia and Petrockstow where I live. This decision will have a huge impact across the whole of Devon. And I am also concerned for the knock-on effects in relation to the viability of our rural fire stations affected as a result of these cuts. Co-responder services are based at fifteen fire stations, Linton, Woolercoon, Prinstown, Coombe Martin, Hartland, Holesworthy, Chagford, Morton Hampstead, Dawlish, Axminster, Chumley, Crediton, Havelley, Seaton and Ivy Bridge. There is a huge amount of concern from people and organisations across the whole of the South West. People living in rural areas already feel vulnerable as we see facilities and services diminishing, and this feels like yet another service being dismantled. This is such an important decision with lives literally depending on rapid professional response, especially in our rural and hard-to-reach areas. We need clear evidence that this decision aligns with national policy and public value. We need proper consultation and impact assessments and investment in enhancing, not dismantling, the fire co-responder model. As a council, one of our key priorities is to encourage partnership working and the fire coresponders together with the ambulance service are a fine example of this. As Cabinet Lead for Rural Affairs at Devon County Council, I urge the ambulance service to please reconsider your decision. And I hope the committee will consider and propose ways forward to support the retention of the fire coresponders here in Devon. I hope we can get the support too of all of our Devon MPs for this vital service for our communities. Thank you.
Thank you. And councillor Robin George. Sorry, Robin Julian.
Thank you. I'm Robin Julian. I'm the Biddiford, West and Hartland ward. And I've had a massive, massive response from all the parishioners there about trying to save the coresponders. They are an excellent service. And it is so sad, even though SWAS is excellent, not looking them at all, but we don't want to start picking holes in, get degrading some of the services. We've had experience, I've had one experience where on my farm, I did my back in and they were there in about nine minutes from Hartland. And I was in a dreadful state and then by that time the ambulance turned up, zoomed me off to Biddiford Barnstable Hospital. So they are good. Once you contact with the coresponders, it immediately triggers the ambulance, whatever they do, and away you go. But we've had a volunteer in Hartland that the SWAS has had and he had two callouts. He worked at night. He was absolutely exhausted. He couldn't do anything. So we don't want to be in a position where we've got people doing this job and in great respect that they're doing a fantastic job, but then can't do anything afterwards. So we don't want to start shooting the coresponders and, because they're super efficient, they really are. And they have everything on their vehicles, their vehicles are free to get to the situation to do their co-responding. And, you know, you can't fault that. I mean, they're giving a bit more of their service to help the NHS. And the NHS are good. I mean, there's nothing, you know, I'm not even going to criticise them. They're very good, but the cuts from the government and everybody's trying to save a shilling. But we are so remote where we are on the peninsula and the nine parishes that I serve. We cannot afford to start cutting corners, so I'm all for that to save the coresponders. And I hope the NHS SWAS will take note and make no decision until they absolutely investigate absolutely everything. And if there's a chink in anything, we've got to stay as we are. It's important. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If we could now move to questions, please. I think councillor Sally Morgan has a question.
Thank you. I've got a few questions. I mean, I want to first start by saying thank you for being here today and thank you for the work that you do. If there's anybody that understands pressures and budgets, it's local government, so we do understand. However, I want to come back to a few things that you said. You said you're constantly reviewing your model of operation. This is a good model, actually. It saves money in the long run. So can I ask what prompted you to change it? And if you, if it is fed by data, for the life of me, I cannot find that data. Can we make that data transparent? We need to be, we in local government, when we make a change, we need to make everything, all our data transparent so people know where that decision is coming from. We don't know where this decision is coming from. We only know it's budget. But you're also saying that the co-responder model is quicker, more efficient, but we're not seeing the full impact of the data, we're not seeing the full data. I would quite like us to be able to see that, please. And also I want to say, you mentioned in your report Jeff as an example of a co-responder. Jeff seventy-two, he makes himself available for sixty to sixty-five hours a week. Well, I've got to say, there's not many Jeffs in the world. I wish there were more. And if I'm honest, that doesn't fill me with a great deal of confidence, knowing that there is an alternative service that you could be using that is better staffed, better funded and can be there just as quickly and there's more of them. There's not just one Jeff, there's lots of jets in that service. What assurance can you give us that in this co-responder model that you want to choose, we are going to get the same level of service that we're getting at the moment, because the service we're getting at the moment is pretty good. And it fills a hole that you as a stretched ambulance service can't fill. And it just seems a shame. It is a good model. Why change it?
Dr Martin.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Do you want me to reply to the two previous statements as well, to do all three questions in?
Yes, please.
Yeah. Okay, so the data in the report is as outlined, the Devon data is true that community first responders go to a wider specification of calls, so always happy to provide more data if there's specifics that want to be. And I think we highlighted the data report would be useful if the committee has more data requests, we're happy to to review them if we have that. In relation to blue lights, it is true that coresponders respond on blue lights, but it's also true they have to go first to the station to pick up their vehicle. Whereas as I outlined earlier, the community first responders respond from home, often within a mile or two of their house, and you'll know that that is quick and that's what our data would show. We do continue and we will continue to work in partnership with the fire service on a range of calls that we go to where there's also a fire need. So a number of the examples that have been given today, it would be appropriate that we are both responding together because it is both a rescue need as well as a medical emergency need and they continue. I'm not going to speak about whether this risks fire station closures. I think that's more appropriate for my colleagues in fire to answer. And as I've already stated, we are only going to stand something down once we've stood up an alternative. And that was what our impact assessments and the risks that we talked through were showing. So this is a a change as we move through that. In terms of the model of operation, the prompt to change is a constant review of how do we respond effectively to our patients? So whilst we've heard some phenomenal stories today, which we again should say thank you to our fire coresponders, we also heard of one story where there wasn't a fire co-responder available. And what I'm outlining is a belief from us, and we need to be proved right, that we believe that we can stand up more community first responders and having more available and moving more people into the Good Sam application on mobile phones will allow us to get to all of, more calls than we do currently. So I think that's the change that we're talking about. I think in terms of volunteers, our our evidence, and Jane might support this, as the head of volunteering would suggest otherwise, actually, we've seen a dip that did occur and actually now we're seeing an active participation in our community for this role specifically. I can't talk about wider volunteers, but community first responders and people responding to their local their local community does to be the case. Last reflection I'll give is, we talk about reliability and as the data shows, on about fifty percent of occasions, the fire coresponders are not available when we request them. I recognise the reasons, having spoken to fire about this. So sometimes they're on a fire call, obviously sometimes they're held back for a fire. Sometimes there's a shift that's covered by someone who's not trained. And fire alongside answering potentially around fire station closures may want to give us a sense of we've got eighty-one coresponders across Devon, what your total workforce is, i.e. how many non-co-responder firefighters are. I hope that addresses the questions.
Thank you. Councillor McGough.
Thank you very much, Chair. I'd like to give my apologies, attending late, I was stuck in traffic. The Tories have exited coming from Apple. Question firstly for Mesa, have you looked at working more closely with the fire brigade as in joining up your operations as in future-proofing the blue light services really? What I'm trying to say is, it's no point you having your depots, the fire department have their depots, the fire department already under strain financially, you're under strain financially, is where I see it from this report going forward. You're making hard-line decisions at the moment, which I personally believe affects the residents of Devon. Now, this decision is purely based on funding, it's my own opinion, it's based on funding. If we work closer together, you work closer to the fire brigade, actually have a joint bigger platform to work from, you know, it's going to save costs, we can get rid of sites we don't need anymore, we don't need to see fire stations closing. If we do, join up in that big industrial estates, this is what the industrial estates and commerce is, the business sector of it, it just works more efficiently there. That's what I believe in this one, just to do with funding really, it would save a lot more money in the pipeline. Have we looked at this? And age old question, if we do this now, if we change the model, which the model clearly works, will then next year you be coming for the catch tax preset? Will we? will then next year you be coming for the catch tax preset? Will SWAST be putting up your rates again? More money for the taxpayer to cover your your project going forward. You look at the model trying to go forward, it actually works. I don't personally believe it's going to work. What we got actually works at the moment. The rural locality of Devon is so important to keep hold of that rural locality. And by doing this, I don't believe it's going to work myself. I'm not an expert, but I don't need to be an expert, so just speaking about my residents. Okay, thank you.
Dr Martin.
Yeah, thank you. So in terms of working together with with the fire service and we have to work together with five fire services across the southwest. We have recently reestablished a collaboration forum between us, the five fire services and the five police forces. And we are actively talking about how we how we share, how we collaborate. We do have a number of initiatives, less relevant for Devon, although there is one, one in Devon is a tri service response officer up in in the north of the patch. We do that with Cornwall. So we we are collaborating on things that we feel are a genuine benefit to the population and how we can do that. In relation to the money, I will, I'll specify again, that was not the primary driver for this conversation. Money obviously is a factor because we're public servants. We have to use the money and the resources we're allocated well. We looked at our response times and how do we affect that? And the money that ultimately we were going to be paying to, under this model, the fire co responders. I've moved the majority of that budget over to Jane so that she can stand up more community first responder schemes. So this is not just about, say, this is about a movement of funds around. And that's because we believe and Jane may want to comment later as head of volunteering that actually more volunteers, more availability or more street corners will actually be beneficial to the public when we come to respond to calls such as cardiac arrests.
Thank you. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you, Dr Martin, for attending today. I have a number of questions, but I'll start with question one. The question is simple. When was this decision made? And I've got a little bit of context for you, just why I'm asking the question. I've been talking to the retained fire crew at Chumley Fire Station. And I'm told, and this is entirely from their point of view, that they've been having the co responders capabilities scaled down over the past two or three years. They've lost the ability to administer certain medication. They've lost the ability to take in ear temperature readings. The crew at Chumley believe that this decision was made many, many years ago and that they've had their capability taken off them piece by piece to provide the groundwork for it. I'd love to hear your opinion on that one. And I wanted to echo your admiration for the volunteer sector and how important it is because we have in Chumley a charity called DART. DART are the ones that have fundraised for many, many years to provide the vehicle for the co responder, to provide all of the equipment, to provide huge amounts for the charity, sorry, for the community. So the volunteer sector is already playing an incredible part. And I worry that if we ask even more of the volunteer sector by taking away these professionals from the co responder duty, we are increasing that risk. So my question is, when was the decision made, please?
So the decision specifically in relation to transitioning from a co responder scheme to standing up more community first responder schemes was made earlier this year, so February time or March, it's changed this time. So the conversation started in February. We were looking at our model going into the subsequent year, which we always have to do as as part of that alongside the resources. The conversations with the fire service happened at the same time we started mentioning our intentions. What I what I would say is over a number of years, there's been questions about the scheme. I've already highlighted that we work with five fire services across the southwest. We've been pursuing for a number of years and bear in mind, I've only been in the southwest for a year and a half, so my predecessors. Memorandums of understanding between the fire service and ourselves, three out of the five fire services have never signed a memorandum of understanding with us. That doesn't apply to Devon, so I will give credit to to Devon who have proactively been working with us and have signed a memorandum of understanding about how this works. What you raised therefore in terms of governance is how we work through that is our memorandum of understanding. What are the skills? How do we provide the clinical governance for that, the the oversight? And that varies across across the region. As I've said, with three fire services that don't have a memorandum of understanding in place and one, and it wasn't Devon, the the only provided that memorandum of understanding when we made our declaration that we would be transitioning from one scheme to 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 another. And it's that that has that has changed. You may well then ask, well, why don't we do something specific with Devon versus A and other? Nine 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 calls coming because of the way it's structured to the southwestern ambulance service as a whole. So they'll be taken in Exeter or Bristol. Our emergency operations centres then have to work effectively to do that. We therefore try and simplify as much as possible, which is why we would like consistent models because that makes it easier to be able to respond to the public well when we're doing it at the scale we are.
Thank you. Do members have another question? Any more questions? Oh, councillor Ketchin and then councillor Dawson, please.
Can I start with a question for Officer Ellis, please? And can I just get a bit of understanding of what the fire co responders setup is? And would it be the case that it would be only be on duty officers that would respond to incidents, cat one incidents? Or is it all takers, these eighty-one men and women, when they're off duty, they will respond as well? What's the sort of setup?
Thank you for the question. So we provide for our fire stations. We have the the co responder scheme is on on our on call stations. These are our on call firefighters that have other jobs that live within five minutes of the fire station. So they will they will put themselves available. Some of those will provide twenty-four seven cover. Others generally around about hundred twenty hours a week. They are built into the availability. So if they're not on a fire call, they're available for co responder calls.
So is it fair to say then that your fire co responders are a fixed cost? And that's been paid by the public purse and that if they're not utilized at a fire or a a sort of an extrication of some form, which is their other skill set, then to use them as a fire co responder would be no extra fixed cost to the public purse per se? Or what is this eighty pounds that's sort of notionally passing between two public bodies? What does what does that envisage? What does that actually cost the public? Is that a a payment to the individual?
So our our crews, we send a dual crew. So we send two crew. So that payment with the within the memorandum of understanding is to cover us providing vehicles, PPE and also the hourly rate. So on call firefighters are paid a standby hourly rate to provide operational cover when they're not at the fire station. When they're then utilized, they're paid then the hourly rate of a firefighter when they're operationally available.
So just my last question then, is it the case that if your fire correspondents turn up to cat one time critical incident, they'll turn up with an AED and oxygen?
That's right. Yes. Yep.
Quite a big difference from our co responder. Is that right?
Yeah, go on then.
Can I pick that up, please, Chair? So just to give you a little bit of background about our, we've got six hundred and fifty community first responders across the whole trust. That's not just Devon. The the number for Devon is a hundred and seventy. But they they have a level three qualification called first responder on scene. They have all the equipment that a fire co responder would carry. So they carry oxygen, they carry a D fib. They carry a bag valve mask for giving breaths to someone in cardiac arrest. They also carry pain relief now. They carry a lifting chair. They can do a full set of observations. You picked up the point about some of the, you talked about degradation in skills and the removal of pain relief from fire correspondents. Now, because fire correspondents only attend category one calls, which category one calls are cardiac arrests, seizures. They they carried Entenox. You would never need Entenox in that type of call. So that is why they they will say that pain relief has been removed from them simply because it doesn't sit with a category one call type. I can't comment on the the temperature removal. They should all have tympanic thermometers. So I'll pick that up. But they have, they are trained to FEM level C, which is pre hospital emergency medicine level C. So it gives them, this is our community first responders, so it gives them a a specified set of skills that they can perform. They go through update training. They have to do an education day every year in which we upskill them in a variety of different areas, including medications, lifting. And they have direct contact with our control rooms so they can they can text through a set of clinical observations. They can ring into one number and they get to speak to a specialist paramedic or a clinical support officer who can provide them with support on scene. And around ten percent of cases that our community first responders go to, and last year they attended thirty thousand patients across the trust, about ten percent of those, no other ambulance resources sent. So they they have a huge set of skills and the members of the public who spoke today gave some incredibly powerful stories. But equally, I could give you a whole set of very powerful stories from our community first responders where they have also saved lives.
Chair, can I ask the SWAST a couple of questions? So just to get parity of comparison with some of the limiting factors, that's great, really helpful baseline. So we all understand that there's parity of care there potentially. But what wasn't clear in the report was there's about a sort of a sixty-five, seventy percent hit rate when the fire correspondents can meet their category one aspirations, if we like. And I couldn't understand why that why that figure wasn't provided for the community correspondents. It completely disarmed the committee, of course, in trying to understand what the limitations of the co responders are. So there's nine thousand incidents in Devon a year approximately that are the community first course, community first responders attend. We know the majority of them won't be category one events. Can you tell us what number of category one events they attend and what number they cannot they cannot attend? Because that will give us an understanding, a direct comparison. Thank you.
So I can't give you the precise figure, but generally the category one calls attended by CFRs community first responders is around twenty-five percent of the total call volume that they attend. So two and a half thousand, something like that would be category one calls. You have got the the differential at the bottom of the paper is is specifically on category one response times. So the average cat one response time over the twelve month period of twenty ninth of June, twenty four to twenty ninth of June, twenty five in Devon for fire co responders was fourteen minutes and nine seconds. For community first responders attending only category one calls, it was eight minutes and twelve seconds. Now, now clearly, you know, that is across the whole of Devon and your fire co responders are only in fifteen stations across Devon.
I'm not sure that we have an understanding then of what the response rate to category one is for community first responders. My final question was just going to be, sorry, thank you, patience from the chair and others in the room. But my other question was, is do we have an understanding of the geographical holes or split? And how the two services perhaps complement each other or or not? Because I think it's very clear, there's a lot of people here from Hartland today. And I don't spend a lot of time in Hartland. I live in Exeter, but you know, I just know it's a very long way away with a lot of farms and it doesn't seem to be an awful lot of anything else. Sorry, Julian. And, you know, it's a wonderful place to live, no doubt, but there are concerns to the community and a lot of people who are elderly move to Exeter precisely because they want to be near medical facilities. I hear that a lot and I'm sure you do too. So can I just get an understanding? Is there is this a complimentary service geographically? Because the suggestion from Hartland is that is the case. Or is there, in your view, a very wide distribution of community first responders without geographical gaps? Because that really comes to the crux of some of the concerns that I'm hearing today.
Yeah, thank councillor. So there are geographical gaps, which is why we're working with the fire service on a transition. So we know how many responses have been made from each fire station across across the region. So I'm talking about, we know that in the last year, some fire co response schemes haven't been out at all. Some have been out quite a lot and that, as as Mr Ellis said, often where we've got community first responders who've stood up, we see that the the number of fire corresponds go out. So we are working station by station on the number of calls that have been happening in the last twelve months. And then what we think that will need in terms of community first responders to 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 stand up. The the other question you posed about, and the reason it's not in the data, is because the models are are different. So fire are available on the end of the phone twenty-four seven in the sense that I can phone fire control and say in Hartland, I've got a category one, can you go? And therefore we've got a decline rate. Whereas community first responders aren't like that. They're they're booking on when they are available. So their their hit rate is, it's like they don't decline in the same way. If that makes, does that make sense? So it's it's because they're two different operating models that the data is not comparable in that sense.
Thank you. Councillor Dawson.
Thank you, Chair. So I'm councillor Dawson from Dawlish Parish, where our population fluctuates, particularly during the summer season. And so I just don't think this is an issue that's just affecting our rural areas. Being sort of stuck between two trusts almost and previously cut off by floodwaters very quickly. And my, I've got a couple of questions for SWAST really. I'm I'm finding myself a little puzzled in a challenging time, which we've been in since sort of post Covid really for volunteer recruitment and retention. How many volunteers would you need for the fire service to be finally stood down on this project? And how can you be sure that you can recruit and retain to this high stress, high pressure role? And I guess point two, or question two, is at a time when SWAST is struggling to to provide ambulances to areas, and there's been many stories of my own, particularly even with my own child actually in emergencies, where there have been no ambulances whatsoever in our area, nothing, nothing available at all. And is it a sensible idea to remove the coordination of that first response from SWAST that are struggling to meet those? Those, you've already said you're quite sort of snowed under in the amazing work that you do to shift that away from the fire service where the fire service have that rotor where people are on it's seven days a week cover. Where it's seven days a week cover, I understand it's different everywhere. And so that that's another concern for me. And I guess also the the category one with we're referring quite a lot to cardiac arrests and things. As a parent of somebody who has quite complex asthma, she's she's required that quite a few times and quite a few times we've been really grateful to have the fire service arrive. And even when they haven't been able to do much, it for a patient to have somebody there with oxygen assessing and with a calm, cool and collected kind of character, but in in that team and has been probably lifesaving as well, actually, because keeping calm is is another thing during crisis, isn't it? And so, yeah, and I think that about that retention, you were saying that more than one volunteer where they were available would be posted out to an event or to an incident. And where they're available is is not a particularly robust position to be in if we're looking at, as previously been said by some of the remarkable stories, where you've had to move move a casualty to get the best outcome for treatment, things like that. So that's also a concern, recruitment, retention, and where are you going to be able to actually provide robustly provide and reliably provide that two person team?
Yeah, thank you, councillor. So I'm going to say our volunteers as well provide much, much needed reassurance to patients, sometimes where they're not providing clinical skills. So that ability is hugely important as a as a as a professional, whether you're responding as a volunteer or in a paid capacity to look after patients and make sure they remain calm. And our community first responders do that well. We're seeing that our community responders are increasing that as we put out adverts, more and more people are coming forward. We are able to retain them and that is the basis behind this. In terms of the numbers we need, that's where we're working with the fire service on, like I say, we've got each station, the number of calls that they've been to in the in the last twelve months, what's been available. Therefore with Jane, and this is where I talked about the the movement of the budgets over time so that Jane and her volunteering team can can stand up. I'll restate again that is this, the primary reason for this is we want to make sure that we can increase the I'll restate again that is this, the primary reason for this is we want to make sure that we can increase the number of patients that we get to in a timely fashion. And just to restate, 619 incidents in the last 12 months when we asked fire to be available, were not available to attend for correspondence. So I think this is that we haven't got a consistent scheme, even with the fires to stand it up. And that's why we want to increase the number of community first responders in communities so that we can increase the amount of patients we can get to in a timely fashion.
Thank you. I think councillor Hookway.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I have to say, as this debate's going on, like councillor Dawson, I'm getting more and more puzzled about exactly what is being proposed here in terms of community service responders. Mine is a coastal division on the south coast. You mentioned the RNLI. I happen to know that RNLI, when they respond to an event, are drilled exactly how to respond to a medical emergency. From what you've told us here today, if I've got this right, you are saying that community service responders are going to turn up, they may have some training, but they're basically going to be on the end of a phone, speaking to somebody or something as to how they would be guided through dealing with a particular emergency. I'm not very happy with that and I absolutely support other members' concerns about this. I also have other concerns. I don't think you've understood perhaps the value of somebody turning up in uniform and that the benefit that that might have. You're going to have a lot of problems with community service volunteers in terms of safeguarding, in terms of issues there, I think, and that's going to be something that will be of great concern to this council. And so I really do want to ask you, how do you see this going in the long term? What is your target number for community service volunteers? And is this just in rural areas or across the county? Thank you, Chair.
I'll pick that one up if I can, please, Chair. Councillor, so we we currently have 650 community first responders, as I said. Last year, we recruited a further 210. So and and we will be aiming for another 210 this financial year. We target our recruitment, it's not a scattergun approach. So obviously, since we've taken this decision in March this year, our targeting in terms of our recruitment campaigns are absolutely focused on areas where we currently have fire coresponders and are using those. In terms of them being on the end of a phone, no, I think we might, I perhaps didn't explain it well enough. They go to the person and see them face to face. But our community first responders have direct access into our control room, which a fire coresponder wouldn't. So they can talk to a specialist paramedic on the phone who can upgrade that call if necessary, get them more help, get the helicopter, get whatever they need to help them address that call. So they've they've got, what I'm saying is that they've got direct access to the control room and to clinical support. You talked about uniforms. You would not know that you were being seen by a volunteer. They look just like me and John, but they have bright yellow epaulettes that say community responder on. They look exactly like that, us. They don't look as though they've just come out in the dungarees from painting. They they are professional. They look like part of our service and they are part of our service. And in terms of DBS checks, I just pick up that point, they are all DBS checked. And they go through all the same recruitment checks that any paid member of staff would. Thank you. I think we've got a couple more questions. I've got councillor Rogers, councillor Hodson, and a quick question from councillor Morgan, please.
Thank you, Chair. Thanks for taking my questions and thank you to the volunteers who come to this meeting today. Is South West Ambulance Service subject to intending a coroner's court where it's been identified life could have been saved? If there was a proper response by the emergency services in your case, paramedics? Are you summoned to attend apparent coroner's court for an inquest?
Oh, yeah, regularly, yeah.
Is there any evidence where you haven't attended where life could have been saved in your region?
Is is there cases that go to coroner's court where there's been a delayed response to to respond? Yes.
How many cases have you had in the last 12 months that you can share with the committee?
I can't answer that off the top of my head.
Okay. Can you come back to the committee with the answer?
Yeah, that's in the public domain, yeah.
And my next question, your recruitment for volunteers, taking Devon as a whole, can you break down how many volunteers you've got recruited for the whole of Devon at the moment? By breaking it down by, I guess, district and hamlet. So where's the level of detail of what you've got recruited at the moment?
So for the 170 community first responders, do we know where they all are, where they live? Yes, we do know that. So we can provide that if needed.
My final question, is your community response on a specific phone network dependent on the network that recognizes an emergency coresponder, or they tie to one network? Because Devon has got challenges within the phone networks. I know colleagues in fire and ambulances bypasses that for remote areas. Are your community responders on that sort of network as NHS community responders?
Yeah, so we're, yeah, it is one of the same. So it's the ambulance service network is the network, which is the emergency services network, which is the same as what parts, so that's that's used universally by us.
Councillor Hodson.
Thank you. I think an awful lot of questions have been asked of Dr Martin and thank you for your responses. I've still got some concerns about the way you've presented data, but I think we all share that concern. My issue is out of these responders that you've got to volunteer, how many of those are actually within your remote outline rural areas? Because on two occasions, Dr Martin, you referred to saying having responders on street corners. You don't have street corners in some of our villages, you know, we're lucky if we've got a pavement. So my concern is about the volume that you're able to recruit. There is a concern around volunteer fatigue. And how many people are you going to actually be able to recruit? So that is my first issue about are these figures skewed because you've got volunteer responders in the more built up areas and where they can get to their callouts very quickly. And this obviously affects the time to respond. So, you know, the the response times could be skewed by the fact that they've only got to go from one road to the other side of town. So that's one question. My second question that nobody's picked up on, and it was something that I was rather concerned about. CFRs are equipped with enhanced clinical skills and thank you for explaining that, that does help. But the ability to discharge patients at scene when clinically appropriate, that really concerned me because without any other observations from any other party, what the likelihood is that somebody after that volunteer leaves and has discharged, that there's a recurrence, and what would the liability be for that volunteer? Because looking at the interests and protecting them from any repercussions from making an inappropriate decision, I think, is a concern. And that was sort of in the report, but nobody has actually referred to it. And I'd like to thank all the Heartland people here today and and from Holsworthy, because they were the ones who actually raised this issue with me as a councillor for Torridge. And without their information, I wouldn't be so well informed as I am today. So thank them. Thank you.
Thank you. And if we could just have councillor Morgan's very quick question, please.
Why can't we have both? You're going to battle with a full arsenal. We're losing part of the arsenal. Why can't we have both?
Yep. So if I'll answer those those final questions, thank you, Chair. In terms of the split of the numbers, we do know where each of our community responders, it is true that where we've got fire coresponders at the moment, we don't have many community first responders. That's why we've stated our intent with the fire service to work on a transition period for 12 months. And as as I've said, and I'll reiterate again, just for clarity, we're working together to stand up community first responders. And as we do that, we will phase out fire fire coresponders in those areas. If we're not able to get those volunteers, if we have volunteer fatigue, if we don't have enough numbers, then we are in collaboration with the fire service on on what the future could look like in that space. So it's not that we're ready to go, and we've said that all along, it's not we're turning it off on the the first of August, we're saying that we're going to work over a period of time to stand up community first responder schemes to to a figure. In relation to your your clinical question, what happens there is the community first responder on scene is able to take clinical observations. They then speak to a paramedic, specialist paramedic, advanced paramedic in the emergency operations centre. We do this routinely with a range of people. So actually, we'll treat you over the telephone, so we can treat you without sending anybody at all. About 17% of our 999 calls, we have a hear and treat response. That's because clinically, we're able to take more information we've done before, we can access your mobile phone and and see you if we if we need to, if you've got a camera on your phone, which lots of members of the public now have. And we do the same, so we have a range of clinical skills. Not everybody's a paramedic in the service. So if you're if you're a more junior emergency care assistant, for example, they will also phone the clinician and it's that clinician in the in the emergency operations centre who's taking clinical responsibility. And as a practicing paramedic, that that is something that you take on. So you are working with the person on the end of the phone to take those observations. In terms of having both, we essentially do have both at the moment, we will continue to have both. That's the conversation we're having with the fire service. But over a period of time, what we would expect to happen is we are investing in standing up community first responders, so there'll be more and more community first responders. There'll then be a dwindling need for fire coresponders. And we felt it was best to have that conversation with with the fire service upfront, rather than just standing up one scheme without saying that we would expect a change here. So certainly over the transition period, there will be both. And as I've said, if we get to the end of the transition period and we haven't stood up the community first responders, we are in conversations with the fire fire service about, well, what are the alternatives might be? We have reiterated that we're more than happy to train any fire officer on or off duty in being a community first responder for the community. And we are talking to certainly Devon and Somerset Fire Service about the use of this technology called Good Sam, and it's an app to have as many people available on or off duty as possible to respond to cardiac arrests.
Thank you very much. I don't know whether councillor Rousal has, who's online, has a question.
Yes, good afternoon there. I'm councillor Rousal from Holsworthy Rural. I was interested in this targeting recruitment that you're talking about. And it appears from what I've heard that there are areas in the map where maybe responders are not served that well in that area. Are you certain that the way you're targeting the the recruitment is adequate for the Devon area? Should that be looked in in a bit more detail to ensure a more expansive cover is given by the few responders that you do have?
So I'll try and answer that. So so currently, for each county, we open up recruitment twice a year for community first responders. So we would run two adverts per year in North and East Devon and two adverts per year in South and West Devon. Obviously, this decision was only taken in March. So our next recruitment for Devon, our adverts will be opening in September with a course running a couple of months after that. So we will then be focusing on the areas that are currently covered by fire coresponders. So I wouldn't expect some of these numbers, these numbers aren't going to change immediately because we get a cohort of people together and run a course for like 20 community first responders. But we will be prioritizing applications from people within the fire corresponding areas. Does that help?
Thank you.
And can I just ask a question, please? The decision was taken in March. Who did you consult before you took that decision?
So we've been in conversation with the fire service as outlined earlier, actually, for a number of years. But in more recent months, as we were doing that, we've had a conversation as part of our our board. So that's how we how we do that. And it's it's that that we've been doing. And as I've said, it's because our perception of this is actually what we're doing is enhancing the service by moving from a scheme that does exist. We're not about to suddenly stop it, but standing up a new scheme alongside that, a community first responders to to replace that over a period of time.
Thank you. So you didn't consult the communities where the the change is proposed?
Not directly, no.
Thank you. And one further question that I've got, which I'm just not quite clear on. So you can recruit as many lots of volunteers. But what happens if on on the day in question where there's an incident, none of those volunteers have actually signed up or are available because everybody might be on holiday or not around? Isn't the difference between what we have at the moment and what is proposed that's a continual 24 hour day, seven day a week from the fire responders, which we just won't know, we won't have that certainty with volunteers, however many you recruit?
So that exists with the fire service model as well, because we know that from the from the data that on although they, we can ask you 24/7 to be available as per the report on 619 occasions in the last 12 months, they weren't available.
Thank you. Right. So shall we now move into discuss whether the, oh, sorry. A chief executive would like to make, ask a question or make a comment.
Thank you. It's just members and thank you people in the communities that are here today and partner organisations. There's one thing that brings everybody together in this room is that we all want the earliest response for the people of Devon. And I think, you know, that's what we all want in the room. I suppose in terms of members looking at this paper, if we're representing what's happening in Devon, I always ask the question, is this an urban rural coastal issue? Is that a fragile community issue? Is it a resources issue? Is that response for the people of Devon exactly the same response that the people of Yorkshire are getting? Or Lincolnshire are benchmarked authorities? And then within the piece in this paper today, you know, section five, it says, what this means for Devon. I'm always interested in what does it mean for the localities within Devon? So that response, there's parity of esteem. So I suppose my my simple question is that for yourselves, members, there's a further information that our partner organisations could support us with and those range of benchmarking questions. So we can get a full understanding of what this actually means. Because that would what we would expect in benchmarking. And I do appreciate a partner agency has brought information to the table today and we respect that. But many of many times in the South West, our members are fantastic in getting the best resources for the South West and for Devon. And I would want to understand if, you know, if this is a bigger picture nationally in terms of that and what we can do to support you as well as to just get a full sense of the picture. So in summary, Chair, I just think that this really doesn't provide us with that kind of level of benchmarking that our members would expect at scrutiny. But I do appreciate that, you know, people have come along today and have tried to support us in these discussions.
Thank you very much. I would certainly agree with the chief executive. I don't know what the the members of the committee feel, but I don't feel, based on what I've heard today and the information that's been provided, I don't feel confident that this is a sound basis for terminating the the current arrangement. And I think that we should be looking for more information, more assurance, more facts about the current. We know that there are issues with the ambulance response times. And I'm not, you know, entirely laying the blame at the ambulance trust because we know that there are issues outside their control. But we do have some, if not the slowest category one ambulance response times in the country, well, that are certainly significantly above the national standard. And it seems to me concerning that there's a potential change which could put lives at risk without having all the facts and without being clear either how it's benchmarked against other areas or how it presents a safe option. And I'm just, I don't know what my the members of the committee feel. But I think that we should be personally requesting But I think that we should be personally requesting a pause and receiving more assurance from the ambulance trust. I'm really grateful for coming here today. But that's my view and I'd be interested to hear what, what the members of the committee say. Councillor Morgan, sorry my moment.
Yeah, I'm, I'm very concerned by this. The, the report is, is not a report that I can glean much from, apart from what I'm being told. There's no data in that report, there are no depth of data for us to drill down to. I'm particularly concerned that the proposed model is not going to measure up. So for example, you've got 170 volunteers at the moment for 1.2 million people in a county like ours where the population doubles over the summer and the age profile is rising significantly year by year. As opposed to a fire service where there's over 1500 firefighters ready to work for us. I don't have the assurance that your proposed model is going to measure up. I don't think you're going to get the volunteers you need. I don't think we've got the data to determine that, you know, as, as a scrutiny committee. So I, I agree with the Chair, I think this needs to be put on pause. And I think we need to have a more in-depth look at it and a more, how can I say, independent review of it. Because for the people of Devon and for our visitors that visit us every summer, they're not reassured, I'm not reassured. I'm not happy with this proposal at all.
Councillor Dawson.
Thank you, Chair. I think I would echo those concerns and I think I would go further geographically to say there's always a danger in Devon that we categorise things as rural and non-rural, rural and urban. Every area has its own challenge, whether you're coastal, whether you're coastal and really touristy, whether you're rural, whether you're close to the city. There are challenges for all, from traffic congestion to, you know, huge potholes that people fall into, all sorts. So I would, I'd want to see more, more from SWAST about the breakdown in certain areas, particularly where there is already a service from the fire service. And I think I would also say, actually, if this is a model that has worked, worked well, but could be enhanced, I would also want to see an options appraisal. Why, why are we not looking at asking members, MPs to lobby government for more funding? Why are we not looking at strengthening the arrangement that we have for firefighters? So more firefighters are trained, if that's something the fire service would be interested in. So that this model that currently works but doesn't extend fully and can't always respond. Why has there not been an options appraisal that, that has come to us at the very least to kind of look and see what, what the options are really? And I would also say with the greatest caution and respect to anyone in this room that responds or has ever responded to anybody in a health emergency or any other emergency. I think there's the potential here for the fire service, certainly financially, to be slightly undermined by this. If, where, if eventually it's being offered that those who are currently trained in the fire service could sign on as volunteers, is that undermining the fire service and not actually protecting the bigger picture of our blue light services in the South West? If we're saying that actually those payments that currently go to the fire service and possibly help pay the bills and tip the boxes over there will now currently will not be available. And I think there's, obviously each service has to protect its own, its own assets and its own income and protect its budget. And those budgets are often not, not, not good enough in the South West, particularly given our increase of visitors in the summer. But I think there is the danger here that we're thinking about, that we have a service that's thinking just about sustainability for themselves and not for another blue light service. Thank you.
Thank you. I would agree with that. When we should all be partnership working, it seems regrettable that we're talking about terminating a partnership, which has been really effective for a long time. I think councillor Rogers put his hand up.
Thank you, Chair. When will you be able to give us more fact information? Because I don't feel comfortable signing up to this. I share my fellow concerns, committee members. You're going to start a recruitment campaign in September. When, when will you be able to report back to the committee what your progress is? Because I don't feel comfortable signing up to this.
Thank you, Chair. So more than happy to commit to, as I've said all along, we're not standing down any scheme whilst we're working through a transition period. So I'm happy to commit to within four weeks, coming back to you with further, further data. I've noted some points, I think we know exactly, because I've got it in front of me, the number of coresponders by station, the number of calls that they're going out to, because they're the communities that are affected. We will also know the number of 999 calls that occur in each of those affected, affected areas. So that disaggregates it from the Devon as a whole. It takes it down to the areas just where we've got community coresponders, fire coresponders in, in place. In terms of our collaboration with the fire service, we'll continue to, to continue to work out that they've got 81.
I'm getting out at four o'clock for an hour.
Councillor Wilson, could you please mute yourself? Thank you.
So yes, I'm happy to commit to coming back within four weeks with a dataset that is by coresponding station with the, the appropriate data. And happy to have a steer from the committee on, on that, if the specific bits you feel we should pick up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. And I wanted to echo councillor Morgan and councillor Dawson's point. I'm worried about the sustainability of a volunteer only service. I, I've not yet been convinced that removing the, for want of a better word, professional backup for the volunteer service is suitable. And I'm very much welcome Dr Martin's offer to return in a few weeks' time. And offering a pause on the proposal to gather the data and to really look at the scheme and its possible impact. We're all very, very aware of the aging population in Devon. And I very much worry about the sustainability of recruiting volunteers in that aging population. Speaking exclusively from experience in Chumley, if you were fit, young, able enough and you have that desire to save lives, you already volunteer for the retained fire service. Finding extra volunteers on top of that, just speaking from my own little town, is going to be a challenge. That's where my worry lays. I think we're in agreement, at least the three of us, that we need to push for that pause. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. And we've got some proposed wording, which I'm going to ask to be put up on the screen, please, for members to have a look at. And I don't know whether, I think councillor Ketchin put his hand up to speak.
I think if you're going to come back in four weeks, I'd kindly ask you to have metrics where we could compare the two services. I think the lived experience of the people who've told us their stories today is that sometimes people responded and sometimes people couldn't. And we do need to know the non-response rates for the volunteers. It doesn't have to be that an individual volunteer couldn't make an event, but we need to know the gaps in the service that currently exist with the voluntary coresponders. Sorry, the voluntary first responders, so that we know their non-attendance rate. It's not, it's, you know, a nine, a cat one request to be put out in a particular area and no first responder was available. We need to know that, don't we? Because I think that's one of the metrics that your service will or will not fly on or fail on.
Thank you. And I think I've, I can read the wording, but what I really want to be clear is that this, the rollout, the kind of, the, it's paused, that nothing further happens in terms of terminating the role of our fire coresponders until we've actually got some assurance. So I, I'm, I think this, this wording is potentially okay, but I really think there needs to be a pause in there. That's the first thing. And the second thing that I don't think I've heard from anybody so far, from, sorry, from Dr Martin, the actual ambulance response, response times in those crucial areas where the, the, we, we currently have fire coresponders, it's not publicly available as far as I can see. And I think we really need to be clear in those areas, those specific areas, on an area by area basis, what the current ambulance response times are. Because that is for me the, the absolute crux, that potentially people are going to be left unsupported in areas where we have our longest response times. So I'd want to see a reference, maybe in sub bullet point number one, referring to, which includes the, the ambulance response times. Councillor Dawson.
Sorry, Chair. I just wanted to add something as well, which I, I hadn't really picked up on. About 72-year-old Jeff in the profile, amazing Jeff. We've talked about the physical need and the need to be fit to be able to carry out CPR and any of the other things like moving a patient, for example, safely. And if you're volunteering and you're logged on five days a week and you're called out twice, having to do that twice a week potentially. I, I would quite like to have some information back about what the pro, the average profile is. So age, fitness, how that's assessed. The fitness for a paramedic is obviously going to be different to the fitness for a firefighter. But that's something that's kind of given in the firefighter response thing is that they're training, they're up and down ladders, they're saving cats and doing all sorts. So we, there's that, that physical fitness is there as a sort of guarantee really from the fire service because of their criteria. And I think that's something that's quite important, actually. If there's a changeover of programme, what physical fitness is going to be there? That we have these people who could be working at the supermarket one minute, aged 76, and then high tailing it somewhere and having to, to shift a 20 stone person by themselves or somebody else and then carrying out CPR twice a week. I think that's important to hear back about that volunteer profile, please.
Thank you, Chair. Just wanted to say that at the bullet point, a proposed framework for monitoring, evaluating and mitigating risks associated with the proposed change, we've included in volunteer activity, training and support. So councillor Dawson, I don't know whether that would pick up your point there. And then. And then in terms of the request to pause the implementation, is the committee wanting to write to the, to write to SWAST, more formally, write to South Western Ambulance Trust, the chairs of the trust? Yeah. I think the monitoring officer might want to come in there as well.
Yeah, just so we can maybe understand the legal position as well, I'm thinking. So quite happy to write to chairs and quite happy to assist for that process.
What I'm envisaging, subject to any comments that the committee has, and if, is to, yeah, write to the chairs of SWAST, send out formally this letter and then we'll, we'll expect a response within 28 days and then bring it back to our committee at September. Councillor Rogers.
I'm struggling to read the text here on the screen.
Sorry, Chair, I've just reworded number one. Are you content and is the monitoring officer content that that compiles legally too?
I don't know whether SWAST has chairs or whether that's the appropriate or whether we should be writing to the chief executive.
We do have a chair of trust board, but it's more inappropriate to write to me. Yep. Or both of us.
Yeah, it's just, I suppose being clear on whether decision-making power rests effectively to pause. So we understand that legal position.
So it would ultimately sit with our board. So it would be, so if you write to myself as the chief executive and to Richard as the Chair, as Richard comes to the Chair.
Perfect, thank you.
Does anybody have any comments? Or should we move to the vote? Okay. Councillor.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted the views of the committee on whether we should find out the views of the coresponders themselves to this move. There's been a lot of talk about standing down coresponders once volunteers have been found. But I worry about the coresponders and how they will see the request to cease to be their professional coresponders and become a volunteer community responder. Is there a way that as a committee, we can assess the views of the coresponders?
I can respond to that. So we can, we've already spoken to our crews that undertake the corresponding model. We could provide a survey back to you on that. I, I know for sure that they, they take their role with real pride on the support they provide to their communities and the surrounding areas. So therefore, there's been some mixed feelings, I would say, because it's something they're truly proud to do.
I very much welcome the offer. Thank you very much. If, if you are willing to provide, to do a very quick survey, that'd be fantastic. I'd be really interested to hear what proportion of your coresponders would be willing to do the same role, but as a volunteer. I'm, I'm sure you can predict the answer, but I'd love to hear some from your coresponders.
Yeah, certainly we can provide that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Can we move to a vote? Is it?
Sorry, Chair. In the bit about the volunteer activity, training and support, is it possible, is it possible to put fitness profile or something in there? Because I'm, I have a concern about the actual physical capability.
Could you do that, Louise? And sorry, can we just put under three on a station by station basis? Category one call. I'm really quite keen to move to the vote. I see we've got councillor McGough and also councillor Cottle, Cottle Hunkin. So if we could have, if it's very quick.
Thank you, Chair, it's extremely quick. I'd just like, it could be at any, at some point, obviously as a representative of Devon, I'm extremely disappointed that the SWAST did not do any public consultation prior to this. It seems to be like a tick box exercise and I'm so grateful to committee here today where we've not let it become that tick box exercise. We've actually held a scrutiny, which we're here for. So thank you.
Thank you. And councillor Cottle Hunkin?
I was just wondering about separately whether there should be an assessment into the viability of rural fire stations as a result of the termination of fire coresponders. It's not necessarily something that SWAST would do themselves, but it would be a knock on effect, I imagine. Whether that should be considered, please?
I can see where, I can see, I totally understand where you're coming from. But I think on this, on this specific matter, at this specific time, we need to focus specifically on the South West Ambulance Trust. And I'm sure that Gavin Ellis will, will keep us posted as, as, as he referred to earlier in his initial comments about working with the ambulance trust. So I hope that he will keep us fully briefed on what this means for the Devon and Somerset Fire and Rescue Service. Thank you. Shall we vote? Do you want to say anything?
I think, because it's a public meeting, I think I'd just like to respond to that point if I can. So our fire stations are geographically located across the two counties, predominantly within a 10 to 15 minute radius of each other. And the reason for that is because of our core statutory duties around responding to fires and RTCs, where we try to make an attendance within 10 minutes on 75% of occasions. So although we will, we would expand and take on different roles, our core statutory duties remain that we provide, we respond to fires, particularly within sleeping risks and homes. So although if this was to go through, we'd see a reduction in overall incident calls, we would still need to provide an operational response within those areas.
Thank you. Shall we move to a vote? Does the committee support the proposal? Do we need a mover and a proposer in second? I'm happy to propose. And councillor Morgan is going to second. Shall we have a show of hands? Thank you. Any against? Any abstentions? Thank you very much. We have a five minute break, please.
A good outcome for all our residents. Our four key priorities. We will reduce waiting times, we will find local solutions that promote independence, we will consistently deliver best practice and we will work within our budget. If I could add some context to that. On waiting times, we're delivering. Please look at the June 2024 figures on waiting times, which was at a record of 2,705. To last week, we were under 1,400. On finding local solutions for independent living, we're looking at more care plus homes. We're considering a care plus home as a brownfield site in Teenbridge, it's one of those, 67 homes, much needed. We're also working with the volunteering sector on that. On consistently delivering best practice, we are consistent, pushing on the best. Keeping within our budget, we are the keepers of the public purse, so that is always mindful. But if I can add to that, on Friday, I was very kindly invited to a managers' event where 60 managers attended this council and talked about their passion and their work within that, and within that was the four key priorities. So Chair, I welcome your scrutiny on our priorities and myself and the director are happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. And would Tandra like to make any comments at this stage?
Only to echo what councillor Keeling has just said, and given the sort of time, shall we go straight to questions, would that be helpful?
That'll be fine. So if we do follow the same format as before, we'll have questions first and then move to a discussion, if that's okay. So looking around the room, I can see councillor Ketchin has a question.
I'm not sure if this is Tandra or Richard, we'd like to answer this, but just to the committee kind of an understanding of the metrics around people moving into care for the first time from the hospital setting. It's, we're talking about the integration between healthcare and adult care, that's, you know, we're looking at the whole picture and one of the holdups in the acute care services is discharge from hospitals. So one of our metrics we've got is the first one, which is reducing waiting times. Are you referring to the first contact people have with the adult care services? And if I can then dig a little deeper, if that's your 2,000 down to 1,400, can't, no, okay. We probably need some understanding of that, but I would be interested to know if you're looking at the metric of how many people are waiting to be discharged from hospital to move into adult care services for the first time, is that a metric we look at and where are we at with that, if you have that information?
Okay, so I will start and then I'm, one of my teams going to come in on specifics about hospital discharge. For reducing waiting times, we've got four key areas that we're focusing on. So one is care act assessments, that's the statistic that councillor Keeling shared, safeguarding, client financial assessments and deprivation of liberty safeguard. So there are four key areas. The numbers waiting to come out of hospital are not on that scale, but I'm going to hand over to, right, Amy.
Thank you. Amy, Deputy Director for Integrated Adult Social Care. So in relation to the council that we use for hospital discharge, most of the metrics and the kind of dashboard data that we present goes through the kind of transfer of care hub process. So each local area in terms of the hospitals that we work with, and part of what we count there is how many people are medically fit or ready for discharge and then what pathway they might need to go out on in terms of their onward journey. So that's national standard language in terms of the pathways. Pathway one is back out into the community with some support from adult social care or our community health colleagues. Pathway two might be into some form of residential, supported or community bed setting to support someone. And pathway three might be that they need longer term support and so go out in that way. So we do keep metrics data on how many people have been referred and what people are going out on pathways one, two and three. And that's a system wide kind of recording and reporting, because it's very much hospital discharge and getting people out of the acute is a whole kind of system approach in terms of getting people back in the community, preferably in their own beds. So the data count for that is in relation to hospital discharge. Where we count the waiting list data that we're referring to here then, is that if somebody therefore has a statutory need for an adult social care assessment for their ongoing long term care needs, they would be those waiting for the assessment. So the numbers that are awaiting an assessment might sit within the flow of hospital discharge, but that's when people are already out into a form of community setting and then getting their onward journey, which would be the adult social care assessment, if that's what's the right thing for them in their community.
Councillor Tilson.
Thank you Chair, my question is about the Bridget online tool, which sounds excellent and I'd love to hear more about it if possible. The, I'd like to know if you feel that the tool is going to provide savings towards that 8.125 million savings that we have to make and the funding that we've received from the Department of Health and Social Care, which sounds excellent, how long does that funding last for? How long will it keep the, I think it's an app, an online tool functional for? Thank you.
Hi there, Seve Wright, the other deputy director covering the commissioning side of things.
and unpaid carers falls into my into my remit. So the Bridget, it's a fantastic tool. What's really great about it is we've seen it work elsewhere, which is always great, isn't it? We're not, we're not the first, the first ones to dip our toe. It wasn't developed as a way of delivering savings. It was a way of listening to what people had told us about, we don't know what's out there, how can you help us? What it will do is do exactly that. It'll help people, it'll signpost them to the right sort of support, which follows up on everything we're trying to do, which is about linking people with their communities, understanding what support is already there. So they're not coming to us for everything in turn unless they absolutely have to. So it's around, it's a key part of our prevention toolkit. That's been developed by our lead for unpaid carers. And she works really closely with West Bank who deliver our service unpaid carers along with our carers ambassadors, who I would, I really can't shout out enough about what a great role they do in terms of holding us to account, telling us what it feels like to be on the receiving end of services, you know, for their, for their loved ones. And I know they would very happily speak to any members in their local area. And I'm really happy to make those connections if that would be welcome. In terms of the funding, it's and it's and something called the accelerated reform fund. And that came through last, last year. And we've been able to carry some of that money forward in order to deliver this that this year. And one of the priorities there was about unpaid carers because this money comes down with sort of quite strict ring fences and that ticked that box very neatly for us. What we've been able to do is demonstrate that the value of this and what we expect it to do will be absorbed within our unpaid carer's spend in years going forward. So we've got this kind of initial money to set it up and then it will keep it going, continue running it as part of our investment for unpaid carers. And I'm really happy to share some details. I can share that with you separately, very happy to.
Thank you very much.
I saw councillor Rogers and then councillor Abbott.
Thank you, Chair. My question is, when a child goes from childhood to adult, so they're in their teens, what is the process in place to make sure they don't fall down a black hole? I've got a second question as well. Shall I give you the second question? Understanding the breakdown of detail by geographical split, I don't know how you do it, but is it possible to go great down, break down in more detail? Devon is a big county to understand where the issues, where the opportunities are by county to get behind this and support what we need to do.
Thank you. If I take the transitions question first, is that okay? Yeah. So across the last kind of 18 months, we've done a huge amount of work to improve the transitions offer for young people moving from children's to adults. And part of what adult social care has done to support that is to actually invest in the number of staff that we've got dedicated to our transitions to adulthood service. So before young people were telling us and their families were telling us that they were being left out into local community adult social care teams, becoming part of that waiting list data that we kind of have heard about already. And then not getting to them in a timely enough way to make sure we really support them to have a good experience of their transition to adulthood. We now have a dedicated team who work really closely with our children's colleagues as well in partnership to try and ensure that we provide an offer at the earliest start possible. So advice, information at 14, we've been doing some webinars for people, publicly open webinars available to help understand a little bit more about transitions and what good transitions look like for people. And then we've also got that dedicated team now so that we are much better at understanding how many young people are coming and known to us for adult social care and getting in on those earlier conversations. So we used to hold a waiting list where lots of young people were still waiting right up until their 18th birthday to have an adult social care assessment. This team has, has managed to remove that as a problem for Devon now. And we are getting to those young people to ensure they've got their adult social care assessment before they turn 18 and are supported by the service. Still lots of room for improvement and things for us to do more, but we certainly have found the benefits of that dedicated team. The people that are transitioning have told us some really positive experiences about being supported by them. In relation to the local data, a lot of the information that we provide does get split down into local locality team areas. So depending on the specific information you're looking at, it might be that we can present that as well in terms of the locality team areas. But, but in terms of team managers, they get to see this data at their team level, then at area level, and then at countywide level in terms of making sure that we are kind of consistent and identifying the areas that we need to provide some additional support to improve performance.
Thank you. And councillor Abbott and I think councillor Gent and then councillor Granger, please.
Thank you. My context for asking this question is that we as DCC have a position on dementia support, including that it should be through everything that we do. And I wonder therefore if it's relevant under the sections from three to six, 3.2.6 on where we're finding local solutions to promote independence, whether it might be worth trying to promote dementia support work within the community. It exists in some places perhaps much wider than it definitely be wider than I know. But I'm not quite sure. I saw the outworking of community support for dementia within our county. And it might be an opportunity to put something there if that's relevant.
I'm really pleased you raised this because this is, this is one of my favourite topics, dementia. I used to be the lead for dementia. And once you've been involved in that work, you never let it go because it's such incredible work that happens. So in terms of our approach to dementia, you're absolutely right. Rather than saying here is a little something, and if you happen to have a diagnosis for dementia, there's where you go and we pigeonhole you there. What we say is, why wouldn't we continue allowing you to access everything you would always have accessed? We just make it more dementia friendly so you are able to continue doing that as much as possible and we find ways to support you. And that might be by us putting support in, but more likely it's by making sure the community understands and supports somebody with dementia to continue doing the things they love. What we're doing to make sure that happens is we're working alongside our public health colleagues because the our public health annual report last year called for exactly that, a dementia strategy. And we're working alongside our NHS colleagues for exactly that. There is a system wide Devon system wide dementia strategy that has been developed and is in the process of being engaged upon, ready to deliver. And that has exactly that approach that rather than having specific services, although sometimes there will need to be services that are specific, actually it's about making all of our communities dementia friendly. And one of the offers that that we we can make for all of our members is one of my team is trained to deliver dementia friend course. I say course, it's a couple of hours. That talks to you about exactly what it's, what happens to somebody as they're starting to, as their brain is changing as a result of dementia and what it feels like for them and how we can support somebody when they're going through that. And that is about all of us in all of our communities. So if we see somebody struggling, a shop queue in front of us or somebody in the street, if all of us understand, we can support and be kind and understand and make things just a little bit easier. And that is absolutely something that member of my team has, is very happy to offer. And in fact, we have offered it in the past to our members. Yeah.
Thank you. That's great. You started by mentioning the public health service and the NHS is working with them. And so those are more structural ways. You ended by saying that we should all do it in the community and it is that community level, helping communities to get their village halls right or whatever in that very everyday process that I'm quite keen on.
Absolutely. So the strategy has several factors. So it will be about, there are, earlier there was a question about metrics. There are metrics about levels of dementia diagnosis that our NHS colleagues will be expected to deliver. But our role in terms of social care is much more about that sort of community offer. How do we make all of our services dementia friendly? So it's a multifaceted approach. And often, yes, that softer thing about just trying to get the message out there and making sure as many people are dementia aware as possible.
Councillor Gent.
Thank you, Chair. My question's about waiting times and waiting times to get out of hospital and whether that should be within our priorities. Because I was interested in the reply from Amy to councillor Ketchin's question, in which it was explained there was four different types of waiting times, which are part of our priorities. But I think I may have misunderstood that actually waiting to get out of hospital wasn't within those priorities. There were, there's different kinds of waiting that you can be halfway to come out of hospital. But those, did I misunderstand?
So absolutely, the four areas that were identified were DOLs, safeguarding, deprivation of liberty safeguards, safeguarding, care act assessments and financial assessments. What we've done is we've taken the learning from what we call our information return, which is something we had to submit to the care quality commission. So just to round it off, we've already had the notification for the information return and we've submitted that as part of pulling together all that learning. We understood where our challenges were, where are the areas that we needed to pay attention. So it's not to say we aren't prioritizing hospital discharge. And in fact, the team were working with our NHS partners last week at looking at what improvements can be made to the pathways to help it smooth the journey for people and to help more people get home. Because what we're seeing is more people end up in bed based care. But from a, for the specifics for what we need to do to drive the biggest improvement is in those four areas that we've identified in waiting times.
I still want to come back on hospital release. Is it getting better or worse hospital waiting times to come back into the community?
There's something that, so we, in terms of the target, and it's never good to talk about target, we're talking about people, aren't we, in their experience? But of course, we have to find a way to measure and demonstrate what we're doing. So there is something called no criteria to reside, that is what our acute colleagues will use that terminology. And that means that somebody has had all the treatment they need in hospital, they are ready to go. There is no, no longer meeting the criteria to stay in a hospital bed. And that's something that our NHS colleagues will often refer to because that's what they're measured upon. But really what that means is you want people out of hospital as soon as possible. So that's not a target that we are held to account for in terms of social care and we're not measured on it specifically. But of course, our role is in making sure that as soon as somebody's in hospital, plans are taking place, conversations are taking place, say, how quickly we get, can we get you home? And that's exactly what we do. We have teams within the hospital that are involved in those conversations. In fact, we had a workshop only last week with our colleagues from some of the acute trusts and the community, our community colleagues to say, how do we get this better? How do we start those conversations sooner? So as soon as someone is ready to come home from hospital, if it is something that is in our gift to do, if it's involved social care, that those conversations take place as quickly as possible. And we recognise that we don't always get that right. So that's why we had that workshop with a whole stream of actions taking place, some quite simple, some will take longer to deliver.
So I've got councillor Granger, councillor Rogers, councillor Tilslie and me, and then councillor Ketchin.
Hello. Similar to what councillor Gent and councillor Ketchin were saying, I believe the priority should be about sort of getting patients out of hospital. Given the fact that it's not uncommon to not have a single mental health acute bed available at any one time in the country, a lot of the difficulty, the difficulties we have is that we have patients with chronic mental health conditions who realistically are very unlikely to ever live, ever going to be able to live independently. What reassurance can you give to the committee to say that you can look after these patients upon leaving the hospital, given that they are high risk and a lot of, a lot of organisations will refuse to have these patients based upon that risk?
Right. So firstly, I absolutely recognise what you're saying and the demand for very specific acute beds for people with mental health conditions where we wouldn't want them in a hospital bed because it's not the best place to suit their needs. And we do see people in a hospital bed for longer than we'd like. I think in terms of the actual provision of that acute mental health care, that comes under the responsibility of our NHS colleagues. So it wouldn't be something that we would be able to respond to because it's not something we provide, it's outside of our area of expertise. We do work really closely with Devon Partnership Trust and we have an arrangement with them about delivering sort of community mental health support under the social care banner. But in terms of actual mental health acute care, that comes to our NHS colleagues. And I think we'd need to ask them for a response on that one for you.
Sorry, it wasn't sort of providing more additional mental health beds. I want, I wanted to know sort of how you can help the NHS by providing additional places outside of the NHS for those NHS patients to be discharged to. What care you can help that patient to ensure they don't return to hospital by holding door patients?
Just coming there, yeah. So absolutely, people in our community who live really, you know, complex lives require complex solutions. And so that's not a one organisation thing to support. That's about us working as a multi-agency approach to assist people. From an operational perspective, I know that every time somebody is held from a mental health perspective within our acute hospitals who need that onward journey, we have built in partnerships across that system where we escalate those cases so that we make sure that we all get around the table together. That can be our mental health colleagues, our acute colleagues, our commissioners in terms of what's available and trying to work with local providers as well to ensure that people do remain safe in local communities and that that risk is held. We also have the kind of multi-agency risk assessment kind of processes as well to try and support that. So when there are people who do require those complex solutions, they often take a bit longer to get out of hospital, which I think is what Sobeys referring to in terms of those, you know, and why some of those beds are quite challenged because there's a, there's a small number of them. But from an assurance perspective, I suppose the insurance that we can provide is that there is a multi-agency approach to some of those really challenging opportunities that we've got for people when we look to find support for them in communities.
Thank you. Councillor Rogers.
Thank you, Chair. With the CQC around the corner, what's worrying you and keeping you up at night about the forthcoming CQC audit? That's question number one. Question number two, unfortunately, we live in a world of scammers and they're picking up the pitfalls in society and they're scamming people. As postmaster, I really worry people putting their PIN numbers on the back of their debit cards and easy, there are quick fixes. And would the committee and the officers respect a quick fix, one pager? So we can stop the scammers so they know they won't get any business in Devon. That's a collective approach we could do. The scammers will just go elsewhere. There are some quick fixes that are easy. And I'm working with the colleague in charge of rural communities, there are some quick fixes. But the CQC is the more important thing. What's worrying you as, as officers with the CQC coming up?
Tandra.
Thank you. So I spent Friday saying to everybody, let's be positive because there's lots to be proud of in Devon. So I think there is a lot to be proud of in Devon and we do offer a great service. It's not to say we shouldn't improve, which is what our four priorities are. So the priorities that you're seeing are based on what we think, areas we think we need to improve to help us with our care quality commission inspection. So the waiting times and the specifics about the waiting times is based on what care quality commission will look at, they'll look at our commissioning side and they'll, you know, they'll look at generally how we work and what's our best practice. So I don't think, you know, I'm feeling like we've got good plans in place and we've got people working behind them and we've already seen significant improvements. So some of the numbers that councillor Keeling quoted is testament that we've been working for over 18 months now. I'll have been here three years in August and we've really started motoring on that about six months into me settling in. So I think, I can't say I don't worry about it because I'm a natural worry person. So I will always worry about everything, but I feel confident that we've identified the areas that we need to look at, that we've got a really committed staff team who are working really hard. They are very passionate about what they do and their motivation is to do what's right for the people in Devon. So whilst we have to have our metrics and we have to be able to break it down, the most important thing is, is, is the people that we work with and it's what matters to them. And all of the things that we've identified will make a difference to them. So they don't have to wait too long to have a conversation with us, whatever it is in terms of social care. And if we're delivering our best practice and we've got the right community offer, that means they can stay in their communities, close to the people and their family, you know, the people that they want to be with, then that for me and for them will be something really positive. So we still need to work on it, but the priorities that we've set out in the report. So we still need to work on it, but the priorities that we've set out in the report are the ones we're focused on from a Care Quality Commission perspective. In terms of the scammers, I think we've had a conversation before. I think what we'll do is we'll take that to our safeguarding adults board because I think that's something very often we'll run campaigns to raise awareness and we would do that with partners. And so the police has sat around the table, fire service, NHS. So we would want to take that and that might be something that we can, we'll pick up and we'll come back to you specifically outside of this meeting. One thing I'd just like to return to is the working age adults. And you specifically mentioned adults with a mental health need. Over 50% of the people we work with are working age adults. So if you look at our demographic information, we support more people under 64 from 18. So the offer from Devon is significant in terms of helping people, whether that's mental health needs, learning disabilities with autism, possibly with challenging behaviours. We work really hard and I think the thing that we probably want to do is to develop more models which include housing to help more people be at home in the community. So not just, you know, helping them out of hospital or if it's coming through a transitions route. But I think the chief exec also wanted to come in on that.
I think members, what your questions are highlighting is there are connected performance indicators here that were not responsible in CQC, but they do have a significant impact on, for example, the paragraph on the budget or in terms of the concern. That's what I worry about on a weekly basis, so those really vulnerable adults. And are they going to get the services that they need when they're discharged or signed posted? And can they get them seven days a week, 24 hours a day? And so I think there is a need to chair to look at some of the performance in our partner agencies. And we should all be doing that together. We've got a colleague from the ICB. Here I sit on the ICB and I express constantly my concerns that we're not looking at people in the round, our learning from children's services. There are only certain things that will get better if our partners have got the same improvement priorities. So our support chair that we bring back to you, some of those key performance indicators that should be here for partner organisations and we look at them together because there are definitely, and it will be the same, the ICB should be looking at our performance indicators. I have to say, after quite significant challenges over the last two years, we've managed to get a section on children's and safeguarding at the ICB that was not there before. And then your third paper here today, I am very concerned about the stress on the ICB in Devon and the significant financial savings and the ability for the ICB in scaling up to have the strategic line of sight on vulnerable services for childrens and adults in Devon. So I think we've got to join the dots is what I'm saying. But I would certainly welcome a different kind of partnership space where we can actually look at some of those connected indicators because you've hit all the spots that are about partnership working, whether it's discharge, whether it's, you know, our most vulnerable adults needing support. And we do need to work better together in those spaces. And the CQC inspection, it would be better if it was, I think, a bigger whole system assessment so that we all knew what we needed to do better. And I'm hoping that's what will happen with adult inspections in England as it will progress to that point after this first round. It will become much more multi-agency focused. But certainly up for bringing a range of indicators back of what other agencies are working on and how we can help them and how they can help us.
Thank you very much. That's it.
Thank you very much Chair. I want to thank our independent advisor who's highlighted that in all the 48 CTC inspections that have taken place so far, they really want to hear about how our focuses have evolved from co-production. I'd love to hear more about that co-production from our service users, from individuals who rely on our social care. Particularly, I'd like to hear about how we've co-produced with our non-verbal service users. That's my first part of the question, if that's all right. And then my second part of the question, the co-production with other areas of Devon County Council. I'd love to hear how we feel that we can do, especially these local solutions, things as simple as fixing footways and all the different areas of the council, how we've co-produced these with those areas. Thank you.
So I'm going to suggest that we bring something back. But what I would say is we do have, actually sitting within Sovey's area, a specific team that focuses on co-production. We have carers ambassadors for unpaid carers, where they've just set up ambassadors for people with autism. So there is a huge amount of work and actually we had an LGA peer review as part of our preparation for this inspection, looking specifically at how well we did co-production. And what it said was, you've got the foundations for it, but you need to do more to truly co-produce. So we can bring something back about that. But in terms of other parts of the council, I mean, I might point to the work that we do with the economy team around getting people into employment because that's, you know, so fundamental. So we could absolutely bring something back to a future meeting perhaps for you to hear about the work that's going on and what our plans are for how we, you know, what we're doing already and what more we might want to do.
Thank you very much. I don't disagree with any of the priorities. But I think what's, I would like to see is a little more of the kind of qualitative experience that people have. So for instance, in the safeguarding section, we've got making safeguarding personal. The percentage of people, if asked and expressed, say their preferred outcomes were met or partially met. So I think it's really helpful to have that qualitative experience. And I think I'd really like to see that kind of drawn more through the priority areas and have a clear way of evaluating that. Because I think in our self-assessment, one of the things that we were going to do was find ways of better using qualitative and quantitative information. So it's all about the quality of the people who are living in Devon and the services that they're receiving as well as their co-production of the services. So for me, that's something that I'd like to see even more drawn out.
So is that a request for a future meeting to hear more about the work that we're doing or?
I don't know whether, I mean, because these are priorities, aren't they? That I think are going to go to the cabinet. So whether we can shape those priorities?
So the priorities have come out of the CQC Commission. So if you've read the reports, and I'm sure Peter can confirm this, all of the things that we are mentioning here are fundamental to inspection and what they will be looking for. As part of the work that we do, obviously we gather information about lots of things. So what we know is these are the hard metrics and these are the high level priorities. But we also collect survey information. If you look at our benchmarking data, you'll see we do really well in our satisfaction surveys. But also we have various groups where we go and listen to what people have to say. So what we can do is we can bring back here, if you like, information about what does that look like? And Paul Giblin leads that work. So we can talk to you about how do we know what people think? So if I give you an example, we do mystery shopping, for example, made some changes to our front door. They challenged us on, you know, various aspects of how we performed in that space. They've come back two or three times and it's quite pleasing to read because you can see each time they've come back and tested us, we've made improvements. So we can demonstrate different aspects of work because it's quite broad. So for making safeguarding personal, that's an area that we perform quite well at. We can bring something back so that you can see what we're doing in that space because that's about practice. So I don't know why I'm looking back here. I've got my priorities up on the wall in my office. But we've got consistently delivering best practice picks up all the aspects of what you're saying. It's about co-production. It's about what people say about us. It's also, you know, how we work with people. So it's not just about working faster, which is the timeliness. But it's also about how do we get to work with them to deliver the outcome that they want to achieve? And that's where you get the co-production. That's where you get that more personalised approach with individuals. And we have something called practice quality reviews. That's where we look at the casework that's happened and we take a view as to whether it is delivering on those best practice, you know, standards. So we've got our standards that we're working to practise. And when we do our practice quality reviews, we're assessing ourselves against those standards. So we are doing what you're doing. It's just that in a report where we're just trying to summarise what the five, four priorities are and or priority areas. Underneath this is an awful lot more work that picks up some of those. So maybe what you want actually is for us to come back and look at consistently delivering best practice. And we could have our principal social worker here as well and our principal OT talking about the work that we're doing in that and the journey that we've been on.
First, Peter Hay to comment please.
I think it'd be really helpful to pull that together into a kind of overview of what you're hearing and then what you're doing with that, if that makes sense. Because I think that would be, that's kind of putting you in best place as you go into CQC. Because I think it's across that whole sweep of groups. I think also Sovey threw out a bit of an offer earlier on, which was the opportunity to meet with informal carers. And again, it might be really useful, particularly as this is a new committee, as part of induction, that everyone did a bit of listening and brought that back into that same discussion, if that makes sense, because that's beginning to show how does the council as a whole, you hear? If that makes sense, and it will hear different things, if that makes sense. But that might, members are nodding too, so I think they might even take you up Sovey. But that would be, again, be a good process of just kind of cementing all of that. Because I think there's a real tension in the CQC methodology between the numbers and how people are reporting experience. And so far, CQC have gone with the feeling that they get from people about how they feel they're being looked after. And Camden, who are outstanding, didn't score as well on the numbers as some others. And importantly, some other London boroughs in their bare demogrievance. And there's a real danger that the sector will talk itself into it's all about the numbers and not about the experience. And I think showing that you take experience really seriously is probably really helpful. And it's even down to things like, do your practice quality views get shared with the person whose practice is being reviewed? And do they agree with that, if that makes sense? And if you can close that down, I think, and be really strong on experience, that's the overriding message from CQC. And it's probably more helpful than the just, I mean, the numbers are important, of course they are. But they're not bound by those at the moment and they are trying to resist them. But they are going through senior level change at the same time, I think in real time, aren't they? So you are at a difficult point of trying to guess what it is that.
I've had assurance they're going to stick to their current format because they've got the deadline to do it by December and they're baselining. So they have to assess everybody at the same. What I would say and agree with you is that the quality of the inspection teams has improved over that period of time because inspections for adults haven't been in place for 14, 15 years and were very different from my recollection. It was a while ago. I do agree with you. So this is, we are doing the work around what do people say? What do people think about us? What does staff say as well as what do the metrics say? So one of the things that Camden, their metrics are terrible if you want to go away and have a look at them. But, and actually people didn't, weren't as positive about them. But the staff were really positive about the work that they did. And I think that came out really strongly. And we had a, I can't reveal, just in case, because I think this has been webcast. But we had a DAS join us on Friday who's just recently been through it and has had a very positive result and is saying exactly the same thing. So you're right, it's not just about giving them data and saying, well, look where we are. It's the whole area. And perhaps that's not coming across in this report, which is just to introduce you to the four priorities and say, if you're going to assess us over the course of the year, please use these. If what you're most interested in is our practice, what are people saying about us? Then where I would start with is consistently delivering best practice and perhaps not look at timeliness yet. You could leave that till another time. But if what you're interested in is that more qualitative aspect, then I would, we can bring back in, is it September is the next meeting, we can bring back something at that point.
Just to say that our new cross council priorities for 25, 26 cabinet papers go live tomorrow and the customer experience is a new priority. So within that, I'm just looking at the report, it's not live yet. But just to say that I'm confident that what you're saying will be picked up in the key deliverables because it talks about end-to-end processes and so on and so forth. So can certainly make sure that when that's discussed at cabinet, not next week, that we'll make sure if there's anything that, there's a connecting that into that cabinet paper, then we can pick it up. But there are key deliverables that will bring this up at just strategic level. And I do think that one of the areas that we've developed over time as a council have been our personas. And I'm a huge fan of personas. So if you're about to make a decision, you actually bid into what does that mean for a real person in different parts of Devon? Because I think it can have a huge impact on whether you make a decision or not. So I'm hoping that through that customer experience that we'll have different personas of real people and we can consider the impact to processes. But just a headline, it should be public by the end of tomorrow. But you may want to consider something. So in cabinet, I'm looking at that next week, the customer experience, you want to suggest something.
Thank you. Councillor Ketchin.
Gosh, what a lot of things the council does, eh? Obviously, the focus is on CQC inspection and, you know, we want to project the good work that the council does and get recognised for that. And that will make people feel good about living in Devon. I think it's not an unimportant thing to do. I would come back to what the chief exec, I think, touched on about, we've got four waiting lists that we measure there for the CQC. There's a whole bunch of metrics that we're either measuring or not publishing or we're not measuring. I think are really important in terms of the standards that either we interface with the acute hospitals. I think councillor Granger was talking about that and so was I. Or some other metrics that I think, you know, are close to the chief exec's heart along with some of the mental health services and the sort of the holdups that have maybe historically been there. So I would kind of like to make a recommendation, if that's the will of the committee, that the scrutiny committee asks of the integrated adult social care services, that we have some measured metrics that report back to the scrutiny committee, one of which would be the ready for discharge group of patients. As director Wright mentioned, so we can get a sense of where that metric's going. It's not an absolute measure. It's not a national measure, I presume. If it is, that's a separate thing. But I'd like to see a direction of travel. It's not the absolute figure. It's about direction of travel. That's really where we see changes and improvements in service. And I'd like to make that a recommendation if we come to vote on that as and when this debate's finished. So the request would be to make a recommendation to the chief exec that we publish some metrics around integrated adult social care. It's not currently the focus, the CQC inspection, but the one particularly I felt was important was discharges of patients that are ready for discharge, what the holdups, the numbers of holdups, both in DPT and in RDUT, if that's all right. And I think that the chief exec was sort of suggesting there's some other metrics she'd like to forward herself possibly.
Offered earlier, I do think we need to look at the partnership metrics. And it's both ways and how we can both work together to see. A colleague nodding from the NHS, at the moment, the metrics sit in different systems and they're not always public in the different forums within those systems. I think we need to bring some of them to public accountability, looking along the line to an NHS colleague. But we're certainly looking at metrics as officers. And I do think that members should be seeing those metrics as well.
But can I just, I just want to assure everyone, we have lots of data and lots of metrics. And actually, they are system metrics. And every Monday, I get a range of emails in my inbox and one of them is hospital discharge. But also there's something called LGINFORM that you can check where Devon is compared to lots of other loads. But also, there's something called LG Inform that you can check where Devon is compared to lots of other local authority areas. And you can drill down. And I'm sure we can help you get access to that, not me personally, because I always need to be helped. But we can, we can, so it's, those are important. I think what we're trying to do is hone down on where are the specifics that we really need to drive improvement? But the hospital discharge is hugely important to us. And we do have metrics, they are public as far as I'm aware, but they're system metrics. They're not just for the local authority, they're not just for DPT, they're not just for RDU. Obviously, we are Devon, one Devon ICB currently, and so it will be Torbay and South Devon Trust as well, you know, so and Livwell. So it is a system metric set, but we can absolutely talk together and think about what comes back to this. But it won't be just my directorate that's doing it, because they are system metrics. But just to assure you, you know, that's just, this is just a slice of what we look at. We will continue to look at everything. But when you're setting priorities, what you're trying to do is think about limited capacity. How am I going to galvanise our teams to focus on particular areas? You've already heard, there was a hospital discharge workshop last week, there's some actions that were agreed out of that. We're working to drive further improvement. So even though we've got all of this going on, it doesn't mean that stops. But we will have a conversation outside, Peter, won't we, and think about what report comes back? And then who else needs to be in the room to answer any questions?
Thank you. So I've got councillor Hookway, councillor Morgan, councillor Hodson.
Sorry. Yes, so I'm going back to the idea about the local solutions that promote independence. So I'm going to look at a slightly different point of view. And we've heard much about CQC. I am very concerned as a new member that I don't know how exactly to raise a concern about someone who's in the system. I'm, I have an idea, I might know how to do it, but I don't know how exactly to do it. And what I want, and I think we ought to think about is, how do we have a system that allows us, and as a member, to say exactly what we have a concern about? I'm in a case at the moment involving sheltered accommodation, people with severe dementia and having a real issue with cyclists coming off a psychopath that goes through the sheltered housing accommodation. And those people, those people with dementia and the carers that this authority employs are at risk of being knocked down by cyclists. How do I raise that at this level with this committee and with this service? So that I can say in all honesty to both CQC and to the residents, I have raised this on your behalf with Adult Social Services. Thank you, Chair.
Tandra.
So I'm going to start and then Amy may wish to come in. So within the Members' Pack, there is a card which sets out how you raise a safeguarding adults concern. We've got a central hub and they will be able to give you advice, including as to whether it's safeguarding or whether it's something that needs to be done as a welfare concern. So I think at our recent masterclass, and I know we've got some really good attendance, but we're going to continue to do it. Within those sessions, we will set out, you know, what is adult social care? What our responsibilities are around safeguarding adults and sort of indications of how you can raise them. I mean, clearly, you've raised a concern here today, so that will be noted and we can follow up. But there's also the Members' Portal. I would say generally, if you've got a real concern which is safeguarding, I would, you can go on to our website, you can raise it directly with the team, and that's what I would advise that you do, that you set out the concern that you've got. And you talk, you know, liaise with the team direct, and they can make a decision as to whether it's safeguarding or not, they'll advise you of that. And if it is safeguarding, then they will refer it on. There are some specific criteria which is around, you know, obviously, clearly, the people you're describing, the people who are being cared for, meet the safeguarding adults criteria. And I think we would just have to think about if it's a cyclist, as to whether, is that a safeguarding? Or is it something we need to talk to the local district council about in terms of road safety?
Thank you, councillor Morgan.
I just want, I just wanted to say, I actually am very reassured by the balance and the culture in this council, from what I'm seeing. The balance between the CQC metrics and the outcomes and the experiences, because we could be very much in danger, and I'll use a teaching term of teaching to the test. We know it's very tempting to think, oh, we want these points, we want to tick this box. But actually, is that the best thing for our residents? And I'm really reassured to see that actually, you're looking at the outcomes, you're looking at the self-assessment online, you're looking at what works well in other other counties. And personally, I find that really, really reassuring. You know, whereas from before, from the ambulance service, I wanted loads of data. I'm really reassured from a social care point of view that we have that balance, because what I'm seeing is we're putting people first rather than results.
Thank you. Councillor Hodson.
All right, just a quick response to these unruly cyclists. Yes, it might be the district or it might be a housing association as the landlord. They'd be the ones who will take action and listen to your issues. But more to the point, my question is with regard to your report at three point one one. In preparation for the CQ inspection, we undertook a local government association peer challenge. I spent considerable time trying to find the documentation for this, found out it was in twenty twenty three that the peer challenge took place. And it's underlined feedback on our performance scenarios for improvement. Was there a report? Where is it published? And have you, forgive me, but sometimes these things do get slightly buried. Would it be possible? Because I think it's really important for a new committee to know where the starting point was. For you making your self-assessments for the CQC. So I think it would be helpful if we could have access to that. And it's probably quite easy, but could you send us all a link, please?
So it was very public, because we had a big event, because if we're doing something in adult social care, I want people to come. So please attend our masterclasses. It's great that you're asking so many questions, although I feel a bit guilty now retaining my position in the agenda. But absolutely, we can share. I thought we still had it on the website, but we will share a copy of the report. It was used as the basis of our earlier improvement plan. Obviously, subsequently, we've done the, we've undertaken the information return. So you should see a golden thread between where we started and the actions that we've taken. And one of the things they asked, suggested we did was take, sort of elevate our co-production, for example, was some of the feedback that I remember. But we'll share that afterwards with Louise and we'll get that around scrutiny.
Thank you very much. I can assure you, there's lots about twenty twenty three in the peer challenge, but no report. So thanks.
Thank you. So if we could now look at the recommendations on page thirteen and consider how, whether we wish to change those or whether they're acceptable. And I would like to consider some changes. Because I think we've talked about the, the, I don't know whether Louise has made any notes or comments, but I think.
Always.
And picked up, because we've had quite a wide range of discussion.
You have. So the, the, within the paper, the recommendations in the paper are that the Health and Adult Care Scrutiny Committee be A, note the and support the integrated adult social care priorities for twenty five, twenty six and how they've been developed. And I've not heard from the committee any sort of disagreement to that. So I'm assuming that you're all happy to note and support those priorities and how they've been developed. This is number one. The next one is actually A B. So instead of saying number one, it's, it's A. So B is to consider these priorities and the development of the work programme and the lens through which it provides scrutiny of integrated adult social care. And you have had some discussion on that today. I think Tandra's been helpful in clarifying that in more detail. So is the committee happy with B as it is? And to to work that through your work programme. C is to consider what other measures could be used to chart progress towards the priorities and make any recommendation to Cabinet ahead of the item on the corporate performance framework in July. So that's kind of a more active recommendation, asking the, asking the committee if it wants to do anything. So the discussion that you've had has been primarily around the voices of individuals. So the one thing that I picked up would be asking Cabinet to take steps to ensure that the voices of individuals accessing adult social care are meaningfully and consistently reflected in the development, the monitoring and the evaluation of the performance indicators. You're all nodding.
I think I would just add that I'd, I'd want to include the voices of seldom heard people.
Yep, hard to reach. Yep. In the wrong document again, sorry. So Cabinet takes steps to ensure the voices of individuals, including those hard to reach individuals accessing adult social care are meaningfully and consistently reflected in the development, monitoring and evaluation of performance indicators. Yep. And then the only other one that I picked up was around working with our partners. So I know the scrutiny committee will want to be assured of our statutory partners' KPIs, but also that Cabinet ensure that they are informed of the performance indicators used, not only within adult social care, but its statutory partners, including health and police, that contribute to the wellbeing of individuals accessing care.
I think we need to make sure that those, or try and get those KPIs published.
Yeah. So the other recommendation, so if we deal with C, so that's what I picked up on from C. So C was consider what other measures could be used to chart progress towards the priorities and make any recommendations to Cabinet ahead of the corporate performance framework item in July. There's two, two recommendations to Cabinet to make sure it's assured that the voice of individuals, including those hard to reach, are informing the progress. And also about understanding what it's, what our statutory partners, their deliverability towards the objectives. D, within the recommendations in the paper, is to host a masterclass on understanding CQC inspection in August, ahead of September committee meeting. I think that's probably been everybody happy with that. I think there was also an offer around councillor Ketchin, you recommended or wanted to make a recommendation to the committee about a performance report, so more data. I wonder whether it would be helpful to have a masterclass focusing on performance that will help the committee understand, because there's a raft of performance measures, what it wants, in what format, et cetera. So would a recommendation to the committee to not only have a masterclass understanding CQC inspection, but to also hold a masterclass on performance measures to be able to then inform what you, what you want in your report moving forward?
In my opinion, it's a big ask, given the pressures on our time to sort of have lots of these things and maybe documents circulated to explain what they are. Might be a more palatable way ahead. I don't know. For, for, for me, some of the things are relatively self apparent. You know, work in the field, but they're not too complex to understand. And it's understanding the implications of them that's more weighty. And there's three people that are councillors here, sort of virtually mentioned the same thing, but discharge has been a matter, it's not the CQC. One of interest, it's not in the spotlight just now, but it's absolutely key to what we do, you know, because it's a chain of care. The care starts with the debate we had at the start of the meeting, doesn't it? And then it ends with where these people end up, which is us.
So you're asking for greater detail on the ready for discharge data?
Shall I come in?
Yeah.
So we can absolutely provide that. I think, coming back to Donna's point, I think it's, I think we would need partners, because it's not just for the local authority. These are system metrics. So if that's your specific area of interest, we can absolutely do that, I suppose. And we are using them all the time. So Amy's reminded me, our operational teams are using this, this data daily. That's how they're tracking what's happening. So to help people on their journey out of discharge. And what we really want is people, more people getting home. So what we're seeing is we are getting people out, but they're not always able to get back into their own home in the community. And that's what we would be focusing on from a social care perspective. But we can share the data. And I, but I think it would be really helpful if we did it as a group, because it's a shared responsibility.
Thank you. And as well as sharing the data, I mean, I would find it personally quite helpful to go to a masterclass on the different data and what it means. Sorry.
Sorry, if I may, Chair. I've just been unusually quiet, because I recognise I'm an invitee to the meeting. But I think, you know, perhaps help the point that's been discussed, it feels to me that there's a difference between the measures that we use operationally and measures that we might provide for assurance to members. And I think perhaps the assurance is that there is a system for looking at these metrics, that we understand where we benchmark, we understand lines of accountability between health and local government adult social care, about who is responsible for making the metrics better. And that feels an assurance piece that we could perhaps provide to the committee. The, the, the driving of performance through those metrics is more tricky, because it, it is a very complex system which delivers, and therefore, understanding who it is that's accountable for each element is more difficult. So it feels like, I think, what members are asking for is some assurance that we are joined up, that we do look at the same things through different lenses, and that we are working together to try and prove the things through rigorous prioritisation and focus. Because that's in a time of limited resources, is what we all should be doing, I think, is understanding what are our constituent parts to play towards a common aim.
Thank you. Councillor Rogers.
Thank you, Chair. Understanding where we are in terms of the national picture of NHS restructure. Are you able to provide any context to that? Because NHS is changing. The central government are making an announcement, a pledge to change it. And we're asking for information. What will that look like in the future? What are the challenges of all the information we're asking for?
I'm happy to segue into my section, but I would wait for the chair.
Okay. So if we finish this section first, we're kind of getting there with our recommendations, I think. I think, I think I'm clear what we're doing with our data. I think, Louise. I think Louise is.
So the committee specifically is requesting a report on discharge from hospital data across Devon, including an analysis of that data.
Thank you.
Cool.
And then I, I personally think that as well, we should have another, we, we should include in our recommendations Sovay's point about having opportunities to hear, hear firsthand from our unpaid carers and, and taking up that offer, because I think it's really important that as well as asking Cabinet to make sure that they, that people's voices are always heard in the provision of our services as a committee, we also hear those voices. And I also think we should be setting up visits over the course of the summer for as many people as possible. So again, we're hearing that qualitative information firsthand from our, from our residents.
Sorry, should I just put the recommendations on screen? Because I thought it was helpful, because we've run through it a few times. So yeah. Hopefully, it's all okay. There's a couple of things that will be picked up on the work programme, doesn't need to be a recommendation, doesn't need to sort of be resolved in here. The work programme can pick up about the masterclass on the CQC inspection, but the work, the work programme can also pick up a masterclass on the performance indicators moving forward. And the offer from Sovay around meeting care ambassadors as well.
Is that in there?
It will be within the minutes of the, the meeting and we'll put them on the work programme.
And the visits.
The visits. Yeah, we can put them on the work programme, absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay.
That's a great, Granger.
Hello. So, item agenda nine, it mentions environmental impact considerations, including climate change, sustainability and socio economic. Just says not applicable. The CQC will absolutely want to know what we do about that. I mean, I've been through a couple of CQC inspections myself and quite pedantic on things like that. Can't just leave that as not applicable.
I think it's just in the con. I think it's just in the context of this report, so it's not saying it generally. So it's just, it's just a checklist effectively. So and we're just answering questions specifically on that report rather than the wider work that we might be doing.
Let's say, let's say about the seldom heard voice.
I typed it in once before, but I clearly didn't copy and paste the right one over. Sorry.
So committee, that's the recommendation. That look okay? Thank you very much, councillor Tilsdy. Anybody like second councillor Dawson? Thank you very much. Let's go to the vote. Everybody in support? Thank you. Thank you, Dr Collins.
Thanks, Chair. And for members I haven't met before, my name is Peter Collins and I'm one of the executive team from Devon ICB. We have submitted an update request to describe where we are in our response currently to the government's indicated desire to abolish NHS England and reorganise the commissioning and coordination services within what, what will cease to be NHS England. So specifically around integrated care systems and integrated care boards. The update describes where we are in that process, specifically the indication that it's the approval to cluster with colleagues in Cornwall and the Isles of Scilly ICB to, to organise into a single structure eventually that will cover both populations. And the second update is around, I think, a request on the finances, which again, to, I guess, an earlier point are well covered elsewhere in our public board papers. But I'm happy to provide any answers to any questions. I should signal to Chair, unfortunately, I do have to chair another meeting at five o'clock. So I will have to have a hard stop at that point, if I can just nip outside and use your wifi. Thank you.
So should we move to questions? And thank you very much for attending our meeting, Dr Collins.
Pleasure. It's what we're here for, I think.
Councillor Tilsley.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you, Dr Collins. Just a quick one from me. The, obviously, on all of our minds at the moment is local government reorganisation. I'd love to hear what your view is on how that risk is being managed, at the risk of everything disaggregating.
And I think that's a really sensible question. And of course, however, systems are organised, there will always be boundaries that are both artificial and that our, most of our population wouldn't recognise. And I think the, the desire to try and organise into, you will be aware that, or you may not be aware, but members will, will, I hope, become aware of the new tenure plan fit for the future, describing a real desire for government to shift to services in both health and wellbeing, move much more to organisation about communities and neighbourhoods. And I think that that will mean that we have to think carefully about the structures that sit above that, which should be facilitative and not get in the way. And I think therefore there will be a desire to try and organise particularly those areas that we might call place or locality. So that, that describes services that will integrate a number of neighbourhood teams, neighbourhoods being communities of about 50,000 people with GPs, the voluntary sector and other primary care services working in much more in partnership. You know, a utopia we've longed for. That's at that place and locality level, there will be a desire to, to look at continuity with local government, but accepting that the, the reforms may make that easier or not. I think the most important thing is good integrated care is, is, is working to deliver for our community despite those barriers rather than use of as an excuse. So I think whilst we have to be mindful of the changes and we would welcome local government reform that does enable more continuity and, and co-responsibility for the health of our communities rather than treating the ill health, I think we'll work with what we get. And clearly we will be seeing, and this paper describes, the clustering of, and indeed merging of ICBs into different structures before the local government reforms have completed. So we will be first, but we will inevitably morph to accommodate our partners.
Thank you. And sorry, would you, would you prefer to see more local authorities or fewer larger local authorities or neither?
Well, that's a great phrase, isn't it, around which way the pendulum swings this show. And I think as ever, coordination is easier with a smaller number of moving parts. But the ability to flex services in response to local need becomes harder. So I think that my answer is both, as ever.
Thank you very much.
Councillor Rogers.
Thank you, Chair. This is such a big subject that affects hundreds of thousands of people. What do you want from us as a committee? What's the time now? It's now ten to five. I think this, this, this subject is worthy of a subject, isn't it, on right, Chair?
So, so councillor, again, a really insightful question. And I think at the moment, two things that we would want from, from our local government partners and our members is, one, an understanding that this is a big change for health. And it is distracting at the moment while we understand how we are trying to both deliver for our population, but also describe the future. And therefore we may be less attentive than we might otherwise be. And then I think his engagement, both with the developments of, the refreshing and developments of our healthcare strategy for Devon as we move into thinking about what the strategy would look like for the peninsula and for, for the population of Devon Cornwall and the Isles of Scilly. You can see I've been well schooled already. Real input into your thoughts about what our communities need so that we can understand how to organise our structures around facilitating those needs better. And I think an ability to help describe both, both the benefits as well as the disbenefits to our populations, because inevitably in times of change, people sometimes inadvertently focus on what the dangers of change might be, rather than focusing on the potential benefits. And I think looking at delivery of services at scale across a wider population affords some benefits. Of course, it affords some risks and we need to be mindful of both. So as ever, it is about the more questions you can ask, the more scrutiny you ask us to provide, the better the outcome will be for our population.
Thank you. Any more questions? Councillor Dawson.
I had a little question, but I think it's probably been partially covered. I just often, I've got a health background, as have other members. Often we see big changes at the top of the tree, for want of a better phrase, really, when it comes to strategic thinking and delivering the NHS. And often people working in the NHS, people receiving care from the NHS at that kind of level, don't necessarily feel the benefit of that change. And a lot of effort goes into that and a lot of funds and a lot of concentration, as you said. It can take the focus off care delivery. Do you see this as being something different this time?
So really helpful question again, and it's reminded me of a bit, a really important bit of the report that I didn't bring out, which I think reassurance to our public, that actually despite all of the effort that goes on, our services shouldn't feel different to them at the moment and during the transition. In the longer term, I think, you know, and the second part of the report, which is again, really important not to skirt over or shy away from, is that at the moment, the resources we spend on health in Devon are more than we can afford as a community and as a population. And we have to, I think, have some hard discussions in the future about how we reduce waste. And for me, the best people to tell us how we reduce waste are the people who are actually using and delivering our services. So my hope would be that if we get this right, we will be able to, the people who are delivering at the frontline in our communities and receiving care will, will have much more control over telling us what's important to them and allowing us to see what we can both stop doing, but how we can redirect resources, that, things that are more meaningful for our communities.
Thank you. Can I ask a question please? And then I think councillor Tilsy would like to ask a question. When we talk about the plan under the financial position, the plan includes £255 million of efficiency. That is a colossal amount of money. And what I find really quite tricky to understand is how that is going to translate. What does that actually mean for residents in terms of how are you going to make those efficiencies? And what impact does that have for our residents? And where, is it in a report somewhere? How, how can we see that?
Again, I stopped saying it's really insightful questions. It sounds patronising and I don't mean it to be. I think it's just genuinely a really good question. So it is 7.8% of, we mustn't forget, a £3 billion budget. And so I would agree, the numbers are eye watering. But it is spread across all of our constituent partners, so all of the acute trusts within the ICS, as well as our mental health providers and our community provision. So, but it will have real impact and it is wrong to shy away from the fact that an efficiency saving of 7.8%, some of it can be delivered through true increases in productivity. So doing more for the same amount of money. Some of it is about that reducing waste, but some of it will be about having to have made hard decisions about services that we provide, that we may be able to provide in a different way, which will feel like, inevitably we will feel to some members of our community, less it will feel like taking away. What I think the responsibility of people like myself is to try and describe how we are ensuring the processes that, that avoid driving inequity for our population, but also having those really honest conversations that it may be the time that we are looking at providing a silver service to everybody, rather than a platinum service to some and a bronze service to others.
Thank you. Councillor Tilsley. And then councillor McGough.
Thank you very much, Chair. My question is about the fact that now we're clustering. How do you see the relationship between NHS Devon and this committee changing over the next few months, few years? And I particularly note the 33% reduction in roles and functions, as you've put it in the report. How do you see that changing our relationship?
So the, the model ICB suggests that we should spend more time as an ICB looking at what's deemed strategic commissioning. And you can argue that that's what we should have been doing already. But I think what I take as from that is much more of the large decisions about where services should be, where services shouldn't be, and having that real public dialogue. Inevitably, Devon ICB will cease to exist and we will become a, as yet name undefined integrated care board and integrated care system covering a larger footprint. So that the relationship for me will be both an ability to look at your advice on the health and wellbeing of a larger population, recognising that for some of your residents. And certainly when I go and speak to people in, in North Devon, they don't necessarily, they wouldn't necessarily recognise why that their next door neighbour on that street over there has a GP who has a different set of, of quality indicators and drivers, because that happens to be in, in Cornwall compared to themselves who speak and report to Devon. So I think, I think there's an opportunity. But it will also be about, I think, holding us to account for making sure that we are delivering equity across a bigger population and particularly for the population of that you serve and the population of Devon. So I think it will be an ability to understand the wider footprint, but to hold to account for your own population.
Thank you very much.
Councillor McGough.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Dr Collins. A quick question for you. So a couple of minutes left, we've got to go. I see the ICB at the moment is a very corporate body, which are quite, I kind of quite like the corporate kind of world. You highlighted silver service going there. Okay, that kind of, that kind of shivers down my spine. It kind of made it a little bit more palatable to deliver to the public. If you say silver service to everybody, instead of certain areas getting special privilege over anyone else. Leads my question then to privatisation, because that, that to me is kind of where I see it going now. When you say some, some service may not be delivered or maybe changing, maybe hypothetical question, but I, I can kind of see it leading into that privatisation.
So I will, as you might expect me to deathly sidestep and offer that up to central government to decide policies on, on whether there will be a fundamental shift. I think what we do recognise, don't we, that, that already as part of the efficiency savings, that we already provide some NHS care through non NHS settings and that incurs costs. So trying to understand how we reduce that, that requirement. Some of that requirement came on the back of meeting our waiting times that had built up over Covid. So I think, I think actually moving care back into the NHS is a good thing from a resource efficiency point of view. I think that my referring to the silver service bit, I think is more about having an honest conversation with our public about an easy strategy is to say, we'll make everybody live longer and we'll make everybody have access to the latest technology. And some of the conversations have to be about the fact that we may need to focus on things that feel less exciting. So empowering our communities to look after themselves, empowering us as citizens to look after ourselves and our neighbours and spending less time thinking about why we don't have money for the shiny things at the end of the pathway. And that will be difficult. I think it'll be a difficult message for us all to give to the people that we serve. But the more that we do it in an integrated and united way, I think the more it will have benefit.
I think councillor Dawson, thank you for that. Dr Collins has a very quick question.
You can do it in about 17 seconds. And it doesn't really, it's an invitation more than a waiting for an answer. I just wondered if this is also an opportunity, if it's a great time of change, aside from looking at waste. But if health is unfairly funded or assessed in the South West, which it kind of seems in most areas of life, the South West kind of gets a little stung or persecuted perhaps. It, maybe it's an invitation for the new ICB or whatever exciting name you're going to have to actually work closer with elected members and things for lobbying government as well. Because I, I find sometimes that health is quite reluctant to do that, to bite the hand that feeds it almost. So I wonder if this could be beginning of a new relationship as well, where we actually put a bit of pressure on Westminster to get better for the South West.
And I think certainly where there is significant inequity, I mean, I think, you know, our coastal populations are often a place where we would see that. You know, I think people who have severe mental health crisis or have a drug and alcohol addiction, those are the places where sometimes I think rural and coastal communities are disadvantaged because that is where a lot of the population that have those problems exist. And it's harder to deliver over rural and a dispersed population. The argument about whether the South West should have more money is the one that has gone on, as you know, for a long time. We would welcome any support, but I think we would get short shrift from government at the moment, as I understand it. But you're right, lobbying is always helpful.
Thank you. There's no recommendation. Thank you very much. But I think maybe we should try and create a recommendation. So something like the committee welcomes the candid conversation that we've had, that we'll seek to closely monitor the transition arrangements and the oversight of efficiency savings. And then just picking up on councillor Dawson's point and something like working to, to find additional funding or what, how would you, how would you like to express that councillor Dawson?
Work towards establishing a relationship that involves taking a strategic Work towards establishing a relationship that involves taking a strategic picture together regarding lobbying government level or something like that.
Louise?
Yeah, we did a recommendation around this in the January Budget Scrutiny Committee around developing a case for Devon in terms of fairer funding. So I think that's maybe what you're alluding to. Yeah. So the, the committee maintains, invites Dr Collins back at a future date to provide further information on progress update, including budget, and that the committee works to create a case for Devon around fairer funding for, including NHS ICB funding, something like that. Yeah, cool. It's five o'clock.
Should we have a vote on that and then? Okay. Does that sound okay? Shall I move that? Want to read it out? No. Okay, I propose that.
I'll be second, ma'am.
And then should we vote? Everybody? Yeah, thank you very much. And then I think there's just one more. Oh. Thank you very much, Dr Collins. Very much appreciated. Unfortunately, I'm going to have to leave. Councillor Nash, I've got to leave as well because I've got work. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for attending. So item number 10 is scrutiny work programme. So we're working on that, aren't we? We've had an informal meeting, so I don't think we need to particularly discuss that now. I think we'll carry on with those discussions and then Dan will kindly circulate a proposal, pick it, a draft, picking up what we've discussed in our informal meeting. And then we can finalise that informally and put it on the agenda for September. Does that sound okay? Okay, thanks. Councillor Hodson.
Very quickly, when we were approving the minutes, there were several things in the minutes about carrying them forward into the new committee. There's one about prisoners and discharge. There's one about the monitoring, the dementia strategy. And the other one was about the deprivation of liberty.
Thanks.
Can we make sure those things are on the?
Definitely. Thank you. Councillor Rogers.
Thank you Chair. We welcome many millions of people to Devon every year to enjoy their holiday. And obviously that has a cost to all our services. Do you have an indication of what welcoming visitors costs us as a county that we can't recoup back from other parts of the country? And can we put that on the agenda? I think government are forgetting the fact we're a great holidays destination, but we're paying every active money for our limited funds. We don't get money back.
I'm not sure. We can, let's have a conversation offline because I'm not sure that that's an agenda writing for the committee, but happy to talk to you about it afterwards. Is that okay? Thank you. So matters for information. So item number 11 is the election of a committee representative as the domestic and sexual violence and abuse and abuse champion. And I know that Fred has kindly circulated some terms of reference to that position. Our councillor Dawson has, I think, expressed an interest to potentially be the committee representative on this committee. It's a really important role to make sure that we recognise in everything that we do that we consider aspects relating to domestic and sexual violence. So I don't know whether anybody else is interested in holding that position. But if, if, I think councillor Dawson would like to be the champion for that.
I feel a bit uncomfortable with the word champion just yet, Chair, but I'm happy to do my best in that area.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, let's go to the vote. Thank you. And I know your concerns about the use of the word champion. Thank you for that.
And just so I'll put you in contact with the lead officer. Her name is Liz Cardoso, but I'll see you into an email when I email her.
And then item 12, information previously circulated. And I think that's, that's it. End of the meeting. Thank you very much for coming. Thank you so much.